For the regular Board of Trustees meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 18th. The time is seven o'clock. All trustees are here with the exception of trustee Quinn. At this time, if you'll please stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Board, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to this agenda as presented? Seeing none, I would move to approve.
I'll second that.
If there is no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
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 That motion passes. No opposition. The next item is for public speaking for persons who are present. Not on the agenda. If you are here to talk about managed parking, we also have the time for public comment during managed parking. And you can just tell me that's when you would prefer to speak. So let me go down the list. Rocco Blazi.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Newberry. Rocco Blazi, 10955 Belvedere Avenue. I'd like to comment on the town manager position. I reviewed the video from your SIRS training earlier this month. I'm concerned that the town manager claims she works until nine, 10, 11 o'clock at night to get the job done. Frankly, this points to inefficient time management, or perhaps a competency issue. I believe the current trend in town hall to hire assistants, contractors, and outsource responsibility is inexcusable and financially unacceptable and ultimately unsustainable. For generations, this town was efficiently run by a clerk, a mayor, and an actively involved town board. Our town is 800 residents. Nothing's changed. I urge you not to renew this town manager's contract, but please, under no circumstances should you encumber the next group of trustees with a multi-year town manager contract. My other comment deals with the budget. During your SIRS training, the attorney mentioned the need for the town staff to follow the budget or receive trustee permission to amend the budget to spend differently. Trustees, several citizens have asked for a budget review since December. I want the record to reflect this. Citizens have asked for a budget review. For the past two years, the town budget audits have stated the town is not following the approved budget and may not be in compliance with Colorado law. Our citizens are not hearing any budget dialogue. Are you following it? This points to the need for quarterly, if not monthly, budget reviews. I've also signed up to comment on item 10, the paid parking proposal.
All right, thank you. Nancy Dixon.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nancy Dixon. I live at 11045 Iona Avenue. And tonight, later on, you're going to be hearing a presentation from the PRT chairperson, Jessie Strope, concerning three proposals, the wayfinding signage, the welcome center, and the trail maps. And it is a very mindful and thorough presentation. And I just want to let you know, as the Trail Ambassador volunteer coordinator, I support all these proposals and I wanted to give you a reason for each proposal. So the very first proposal is for the wayfinding signage. That's going to be so beneficial for the town and also for the trail ambassadors so that there are signs that can tell them where to park and other interests in the town. They're very mindful on how they're going to blend in with the town. And they're going to be such a helpful tool for the trail ambassadors. The second is the... is for the welcome center. And that will have the iconic trail head sign moved from Lake Street over to Maple Street, where it's just an ideal place for the ambassadors to have that welcome center so that they can engage with and interact with as many hikers as they possibly can. Because that's sort of a central location as far as where all of the main well-used trail are, you know, so that we can, you know, engage with as many hikers as we can. And moving it to that Maple Street location would just be a great place to have a welcome center and have the trail ambassadors there to welcome all the new and veteran hikers. And the very last thing, of course, is maps. The trail maps that's going to be presented tonight, that's going to show a lot of good information for our trail ambassadors to be able to use to give to information to the hikers, such as the trail colors, the trail head locations, going through the residential areas, the difficulty, the length, just a lot of good information that will be very useful to the trail ambassadors. So I am full support of everything that is being proposed for, through the PRT tonight. Thank you.
All right, Nancy, thank you. Todd Dixon.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see if I could hold to item 10, please, the parking.
All right. That'll be just fine. David Douglas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and trustees. David Douglas, 11145 Hondo Avenue. And my comments this evening are addressing, and I don't, can't remember now which item it is on the agenda, but it's Michelle Conley's letter asking the trustees to consider the grant application that CUSP is submitting on May 19th. And one thing that I want to sort of start off with here is a letter that was written by our town manager to the Colorado State Forest Service, I think on behalf of this CUSP application, where she said, "Fire mitigation is a longstanding and ongoing community concern in Green Mountain Falls and is a top community priority, as noted in our community's 2019 comprehensive plan." So, you know, if we're going to talk the talk, we need to walk the walk. And so what I'm really encouraging tonight is that the board look at what is being proposed here by CUSP and realize how significant this is to accomplishing many of the things that we need to, with Green Mountain Falls, with regard to fuels mitigation, fire mitigation, helping people do their, their own private parcel remediation. I think this is the most funds that I've seen available to us through a grant ever since my involvement. One thing I want to point out, however, is that the current budget for 2021 has dedicated almost $17,000 to mitigation. I was told last Monday by the town manager that because CUSP did not complete the project they're currently working on above Thomas Trail, that money was budgeted in 2020. And since it didn't get paid in 2020, it will be paid this year on completion, which will go against the current $17,000. Now, CUSP has made their grant application on the basis that they knew we had, we had set aside or budgeted $17,000. I implore the seat, whatever, the trustees, mayor, to find the funds to get us back up to cover the 4,800 that should have been spent last year to fund fully whatever commitment that we need to, to make sure we get every dollar that CUSP is, is grant or is asking for in their grant that will help us. CUSP is probably the most ardent supporter that we have in our fire mitigation effort in Green Mountain Falls. And I've got to tell you all, this is one way that you can help everybody in our town, safeguard their lives, their property, help people who might not be able to afford it otherwise. So, I mean, this is, this grant, I encourage everybody on the call to read what Michelle has put forward. This is incredible. And if the board, a board of trustees and the mayor tonight don't take action to make sure that we have adequate funding for this, shame on you. Thank you.
All right, David, thank you. Lamar Matthews. I know you're there, and this time you're not sharing a computer with David.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, for the time this evening. I wanted to talk about the grants that have been provided over the last few years for us to try the town manager system in our town. And it has run out. And so I know tonight y'all will be discussing how to go forward. I want to encourage a decision that goes back to the mayoral system and working with a town clerk, as we've done for decades prior to this. There's many cities who use this system. The third largest city in the nation, Houston, is run by a mayor and the town council only, with no city manager system or any equivalent. It works well. The attorneys have no problem representing the city. And I have to think, how has this experiment worked over the last few years as we have tried this system? We have a huge amount of turnover that's taken place over these years. I heard one of the trustees state in a board of trustee meeting one time that the town does not pay enough money to get experienced, well-qualified staff. And if this is true, I think that this is another reason to that are going back to what worked so well for decades and not continue with the system that we can't afford anymore because we don't have the grant money to pay for it. We also, as was mentioned earlier, we, we've had a huge problem with our budget and our audit the past two years. Something basic that would be expected with a town manager that you would not have, be out of compliance with Colorado law in these situations. So I implore and ask that the board consider ending this system and go back to the mayoral system, which has worked so well in the past for us and worked so well for so many cities in our nation. Thank you.
All right, Lamar, thank you. Judy Piazza, did you want to speak now or in item 10?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll wait until item 10.
All right, I will make a note of that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Liz Ives.
This was Ives, 10790 Florence Avenue. Well, everyone has said what I was going to say. So I agree with everyone. The one thing I will say, along with Nancy Dixon's, is that I know we need a solution for our town. Keep everyone happy with her parking. But I would like us to start at the beginning, which is the wayfinding and what PRT has done so far. And then if we have to go all the way to the end, we go to the end. But let's start at the beginning instead of what I feel like is the end. So I'm going to stop here and just say that I agree with Rocco and Lamar on the expense of a town manager has not really been a fruitful reward for our town, as far as I can see. And I do agree with David that our fire mitigation is a top priority. It was on the comprehensive plan as a top priority. And I did throw my committee, so we have to find that funds again. If we lost them, I'm not sure how we lost them, but we have to find them. Done for the protection of our beautiful cities. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. This is the Board of Trustees meeting minutes from May 4th and May 6th. Board, do you have any one item you need to bring out for correction or discussion? Seeing none, I would move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
There is no discussion. All those in favor vote by saying aye.
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 Oh, Chris Quinn. Hi, I heard you on there. None opposed. That motion passes. Next is item five, which is the stilling basin project update. Andre Brecken, I saw you were on here. Do you want to present this to the board?
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Thank you for having me here tonight to go through this information. For the, for everyone listening, Wilson and Company is the company that I work for. We were hired to do a drainage study in an effort to analyze the runoff drainage that basically impacts the town, but more specifically is impacting gazebo lake. There is funds out there with the PPRTA. They've been there for some time. It's identified as for settling basins. What this project will do is basically provide the data so that we can design settling basins for town. And the purpose of the settling basins is to capture as much runoff as we can and basically hold back the sediment that's in that runoff from continuing on downstream and clouding the lake. So it's been a longstanding project and effort and, and really an identified project for many years. And we're hoping that we can get at this and get these things designed for you. So let me just kind of go through the drainage study. We've, at least the progress we've made so far. I think I can share my screen here. Or I may not be able to if it's being shared by somebody else.
So I stopped my share, Andre. Give it a shot now.
Okay.
Hey, look.
So if it's, I'm not sure I'm sharing it or not. It's basically, it's a basin map, a topographic map of the town.
Try it now.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm not...
Is it in the packet? Perhaps I could lead the way for you and you could just direct me, let me know where to go?
Oh, here we go. All right, you should be seeing it now. All right, looks like, looks like the screen is shared. All right, are you seeing a topographic map of the town area?
Mine's trying to load, but the squirrels are about to die in this computer, so. There we go.
There it is.
All right, so what this is, is we divided the town area. There's about two square miles of contributing basin area here. And it's, so if you can see this, basins A, B, C, and D, essentially, they all dump into Catamount Creek. And then Catamount Creek flows through town. But basin E, the one that is to the right of your screen there, there's much of that basin that basically is overland flow and flows directly into gazebo lake, which is what we're, we're aiming at trying to control. So let me go to the next map here. So taking sub-basin E, what we did is we divided that into tributary basins. And we ran an analysis to determine for major and minor storms, how much runoff is basically coming off these basins. And those DP numbers, DP 5 through 10, are actually the discharge points that correspond with culverts. Culverts that, that take the runoff, some of the runoff underneath Uptown Avenue. And eventually, that runoff also discharges through the town area into Catamount Creek on its way to the lake. So what we're interested in is the runoff that basically overtops those, those pipes to a large extent, capturing that runoff and getting it into a settling basin to settle out the sediment before it continues on down to the lake. So are y'all getting these, the screen sharing here okay?
Just takes a moment to load, it seems.
Okay. So what I have up on the screen now is an aerial topo of the lake and the town around the lake. And, and that cyan or that light blue color are those discharge points, the, the actual pipes that cross underneath Uptown Avenue. So what we, we've analyzed the existing condition runoff, how much runoff gets through those pipes, and how much runoff is overtopping and continuing on down to gazebo lake. So this last actual aerial photo I'm going to show you is two locations that we're looking at that we see is really the only potential that we have as far as citing some desilting ponds or settling ponds. And one is in the, well, I guess it's between Hondo and Foster in that little park area. And the other would be in the, I think you call it Flagpole Park over along Park Avenue and Hotel Street. And again, they're, they're fairly small settling ponds because there just isn't a lot of options here as far as citing a pond that we can route runoff to that's going to collect up that sediment before it gets to the lake. There will have to be, you know, culverts that are repositioned, some ditching, and then ponds will be designed somewhat like a detention pond. It'll have locations where runoff discharges into it. It'll have a kind of outlet structure. And then basically grates or grills that will hold back sediment, but allow the runoff to pass through. Probably important to, to explain that these settling ponds, they can be designed in such a way that they don't look like a pond. The park areas can still be landscaped. Basically, you'll see basically a depression where the pond is and then some outlet structures, but you can still use the property, just like a regular park. So that's, that's essentially what we've done at this point. We've analyzed all the, so we have data on the flow data. We've got velocity data. And then we've looked at all the ditches and culverts and basically what they carry and what gets overtopped. So the next step is to actually look at the design of the desilting basins. We'd have to do some survey, get some elevation data, and, and then look at ways to divert some of the existing runoff through culverts and ditches into these desilting basin locations. So that's, that's kind of the project in a nutshell. Timing wise, I think we're, it's kind of a rush at this point if we want to do anything construction wise this summer. It's probably realistically looking more like a fall project, but it just depends on how quickly we can move the engineering, the construction drawings and the process along to get it capitalized. So any questions up to this point?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. Going back to your other map, you had six discharge points you were showing and that were contributing into the, into the lake. How much of, how much of that flow that you're capturing in your studies is actually going to make it into these ponds? Because it seems like the majority of it was coming either through the creek, continuing, you know, to the west there.
Correct.
You know, and, you know, most of this, I believe we have a control structure here that would, you know, if properly operated, would, you know, divert that rushing water at, you know, the times of need. And I'm just wondering about, you know, the efficiency of what it is that you're, you're, you're doing with this. I'm, I'm assuming it's going to be a detention style pond? Or are you going to detain it for a while or are you going to retain it?
Oh, it's, it's definitely a detain, not a retain. But yeah, you, your, your question is, is point on. The efficiency, looking at the overall basin or even just sub-basin E, it's only a small percentage of the total runoff that we'll be able to capture. But what we're trying to do is, is look at these sub-basins and to analyze which ones are overtopping these culverts. And I mean, most of the, the sediment that gets into gazebo lake is stripped, is mostly sediment coming off the roads. It's coming down the gravel roads, getting into Uptown. And it's just overland flow. So what we're looking to try and do is, is, is pick up just that runoff. So we have to do a little bit finer, I guess, finer detail on the sub-basins and to try to direct those small amounts of flow carrying sediment and get those into these small basins. But yes, I, I, I'm in agreement that it's only a small percentage of the total runoff that we're actually quote treating.
Right.
Andre, there's a comment here in the chat, probably important to bring up, or at least to consider if you move forward with the construction documents. It says that there are extensive septic systems underground in the Flagpole Park area.
Yeah, so really the next phase, if we move ahead with this, is to basically start that evaluation. I basically call it preliminary engineering. In, in that phase, you have to go out and basically verify utilities. There's, you know, fairly recent state law that basically tells the industry, basically focused at engineering companies like mine, that before you really do anything, you have to go out and do your best to determine where all the utilities are. There's more to it now than just leading it to a contractor and telling the contractor, well, you know, need to go out there and dig around to find the utilities first. Now, state law says that when we put a set of plans together, at that point, we need to do the preliminary, preliminary engineering and verify utilities. You get with all the utility companies. You, you get with homeowners, the local agencies, cities, towns, anyone that's nearby your project to potentially have a utility. So at that time, yes, we will, you know, basically find where the underground stuff is. And then again, we have to make another evaluation. Is this doable? Is it feasible with these utilities that are in the way? It may very well be that there's so many utilities there that it's, you know, these two locations are not feasible, that you would have to, in, in relocation... That you would have to, in relocating all these potential utilities, render the project in peace. So yes, that's a good question and a question mark to moving forward.
Okay, Board, do you have any further questions?
Yes, I have a question about, I see the two locations and just from my uneducated eye, it looks like a lot of sediment's coming off of Hotel Street. And I'm wondering if this project would be worthwhile even if the utilities, septic systems, whatever, made it impractical to do the one in Flagpole Park as well.
Well, I do know that area, the 18-inch steel pipe, there's quite a bit of water, water lines and gas lines running through there.
Flagpole.
Coming from Hotel Street, where Hotel Street meets you. I've looked at that in the past, there was quite a mishmash of stuff in there. But I don't think in the location that he was showing, there just seems like, I think, I believe there's kind of a slope there. So yes, there would have to be some kind of grading. You know, to level that out and allow for enough volume to be collected. I don't know how much volume, I mean, with the 18-inch pipe, I don't, that discharges at its max, at 50% or, you know, I don't, have you looked at? Andre, have you looked at the flows coming through that?
Yeah, we have.
That's a lot of water.
This is all pretty much, you know, in a really big storm, you know, 50-year, 100-year storm, none of this really counts. I mean, detention bonds don't really work very well, you've got overtopping. So really what you're aiming for is those annual storms, the two-year storm, maybe up to the five-year storm.
Sure.
It's the more recent events that, you know, have a, you know, an increasing effect on, you know, dumping sediment into the lake. It's those smaller events we're tackling. And yes, the small ponds can be effective at doing those. And again, you're not going to get all the sediment, but you're going to get a fair amount of it. Especially if you can locate these ponds as close to the lake as this is. But yeah, for like the five-year storm, at Design Point 10, which is the metal pipe there, the 18-inch steel pipe of Hotel Street, it's carrying about 12.5 CFs for the minor storm. So if that's also roughly the inflow, the inflow flow rate into the pond, then it makes sense. It's kind of feasible looking at those smaller flow rates that you can, that it'll provide some waterfalling. We did look at the, some of the water lines and gas lines there we're aware of. The smaller lines can be relocated comparatively cost effectively. It's just when you start getting into lines, water lines that are larger than six inch, that starts getting really costly.
I think there's a 16 through there. I'm not sure.
Yeah, obviously something that big we couldn't touch.
Yeah. Did you happen to look at the water quality in the lake at, you know, spilling times versus, you know, right after a storm event to see what suspended solids were in there or what are we looking at as far as, you know, what the issue is with the discoloration in the lake? Is it, you know, the silt and fines and stuff from our roadways, you know, or our road base or, you know, and is that something that can even be affected by even, you know, a detention? Because they say suspended so long.
We have not done any studies on the lake itself. I mean, we haven't done any like geotech work or taken any samples. So at this point, all we've been hired to do is look at the runoff. And like I say, basins A, B, C, and D are all contributory to Catamount, which dumps directly through the town into the lake. That obviously is carrying the lion's share of the sediment and everything else that's causing the, basically the sediment pollution in the lake. However, there is a noticeable amount of, when it, in storms, storm events, runoff that is basically carried by your your public roads, basically mostly gravel roads. And that is definitely a large contributor.
Yeah, well, that creates the island, creates the island out there.
Yes.
Well, thanks, sir.
All right. Thank you, Andre. I think that we have a lot to figure out here. Angie, what is our direction on this particular item? Just as information only?
So this is informational, just to give you a project update. The next part of the project, Andre will be putting together a a proposal for construction documents and going out and doing that field work that he talked about. So that we could post a request for proposal and get construction moving on this project. And that would be on the, if you're interested in that, that quote for that work would be on the next, on the next agenda packet. The funding for this is, this is PPRTA ballot funding. Just for those of the members of the public that might not know. So.
And Angie, if you will, if I could just chime in for just a second. The next phase really was preliminary engineering and then we would do construction documents based on our field work. What makes sense, I think, is that if we could go ahead and do the preliminary engineering and, you know, the excellent question about the utilities. Utilities and there could be other constraints that just, you know, from field work tell us, well, this just, it's not going to work. So maybe what we do is I can, I can provide you, you know, a a fee proposal for going all the way through construction drawings. But I would say, you know, we should, we should set up kind of a go-no-go kind of decision after that preliminary engineering work is done. So if we find, you know, major utilities or something that totally precludes us from looking at these two locations, then we can say, you know, stop, let's back up and look at the whole thing again. So we don't get, you know, strung out on contracts and expectations that we can't perform. So that'd be my recommendation.
Well, I appreciate that. This is something that's been on our list for many, many years, starting with PPRTA. So I think it'd be prudent to start with a no, with a go-no-go and see where we go from there. All right. Thanks, Andre.
You're welcome. Thanks again for having me.
Always. Next item on the agenda is an executive session. This is pursuant to CRS 246402E for the purpose of matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators. This particular item is regarding the town manager contract. And as such, it is personnel and subject to negotiation. And we hold those items in executive session. Board, I'm going to ask you to log off and log into the other, the other Zoom that was provided for you. Board, I'm going to have a few minutes to run down what we're doing. And then Angie, I am going to buzz you and ask you to sign in as well. That is a motion. And is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
No further discussion. All those in favor going into executive session, please indicate by saying aye.
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 And then opposed, I will see you on the other side.
And for members of the public, you guys get to hang out with me now. So.
Are you going to dance?
Not this time. And no guitar either, Jesse. I'm beating you to it.
I could turn up the volume on Andy Griffith.
Well, and to thank you to everybody in the public for your patience through this process.
So can we talk?
You can't, everything is being recorded still. So if you don't want it to be forever remembered, then that's up to you.
Okay, this is, this is like not having anything to do with town business, but, excuse me. If anybody knows, we have an elderly bulldog who needs looked after over Memorial Day weekend. And if anybody knows anybody might want to take care of her, we're willing to pay, but, you know, but I thought it might be a good kid job or something. So I can just put my email in the chat. If anybody knows of anybody who might be able to take Maggie for, I think it's like May 27th through June the first, first or second. Thank you.
Hey, Matt, it's Judith here.
Hello.
Hi. Would it be appropriate to ask a question? Like that's not related to the agenda at all?
Technically speaking, when they're in executive session, we're required to leave the room. So there's no meeting happening right now in here. So you can ask anything you'd like, if you want.
I'll just ask and then you can just, we can talk about it another time if it's not appropriate. But I was just curious about how many business licenses are are present right now in the town? And whether, like, the short-term rentals, is that considered a business license?
So I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I can get back to you with that for sure. In relation to your second question, every short-term rental license in the town is required to also have a business license. So yes, in this case, they would be businesses as well.
Okay. And I know that there's a limit on short-term rentals, but I just was kind of curious about the overall scheme.
As far as I know, we're not close to that limit yet. At last I checked, I think we were, oh man, I don't want to shoot off the cuff with a bad number, but something around 50%.
Okay. And I think that number, I remember reading maybe a year ago, maybe like 68 short-term rentals were allowed or something like that. But we can talk about it another time. That's.
Yeah, I can get you more specifics outside of a meeting. I memorize a lot of things and I remember a lot of things, but I can't remember everything.
I get that. Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. Just in case anybody wants to ask me a question, I'm going to disappear and get some water for a bit. So I'm not ignoring you.
How's the weather up there in Green Mountain Falls? Are you still really cold up there or are you warm?
It's cool and rainy.
Well, that's too bad.
Apologies for interrupting. Judith, I have an answer to your question. Thanks, Rocco. Chapter six, article, whatever that Roman numeral is, because I don't memorize those either, 60 STRs is the limit.
60.
Great. Thank you, Rocco and Matt and Todd.
Teamwork makes a dream work.
Yeah. I can't get my video going, so when I do speak later, well, I might just get off and get back on, see if the video goes on.
Oh, cash prizes would be awesome, by the way, Rocco. You know they're not coming from me.
Matt, do you know if anybody wants to replace me on the PPRTA yet? Has anybody asked?
So far, no. I was actually talking to Angie about that, I want to say a day or so ago. And yeah, so far, not that we've done extensive recruiting so far, but there hasn't been a word to us just yet. But now the word's out. So maybe someone here is interested?
Yeah, I would say let's, let's see if anybody's interested. It's called the.
Shoot me an email.
Can I talk about it or not?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, it's the Pike's Peak Rural Transportation Authority. And it's really just El Paso County and we're on the mountain edge of it. That's where the money might come from for the stealing basins. They give some money for the roads. But, and I've surfed on it for several years and then they found out that even though I own property in Green Mountain Falls for 100 years, I live in an apartment in Teller County currently, so I'm not eligible. So they've told me I can't do it. And so it's not hard to do. It's interesting. You find out about all the roads and so forth and development going on in El Paso County. And it's interesting. It's very interesting. So I encourage somebody to apply, represent Green Mountain Falls. The other person that represents Green Mountain actually lives in Colorado Springs. The only requirement is you have to live in either the county, the city of Colorado Springs, or what is it Fountain, Rema, Green Mountain Falls. There are just five taxing authorities. That's, that's the rule. So I don't qualify anymore. So. Just tell Matt your interests.
Yeah, please. That would be awesome. And you got big shoes to fill with Ann not being able to serve. So just carry on our legacy.
Well, I don't think they liked me too much when I started voting against some of the big projects down in the city. Because I was, you know, the mountains are very important. But we're just one vote.
Every vote counts, even the ones that disagree, in my opinion. You got to know where people stand and honesty is the best policy in those regards.
Well, that's always true.
Ann, just to, just to ask a quick question, how many people are on that committee? I would think that Green Mountain would be a very small voice in any scheme like that.
We have two representatives. So there are at least, I bet there are 30. Maybe not that many, but you know, it's by population on the board of directors, you know. Tyler Stevens was on the board of directors forever. And he's no longer, but Jane is. And you know, it's just a kind of a strange, it's only El Paso County. So when they do road work and stuff, it ends at Cristole Inn. You know? Or Cascade. There have been occasions when they did improvement just to Cascade. Because somebody, you know, that owns the Pike's Peak Road kicked in extra money, but then the potholes from there on aren't filled up. So it's kind of weird. A lot of money went into I-25. Lot of money went into uh, I-25. You know, I just, it's supposed to be about rural roads, but it really isn't. Or it became not to be. So. It's, it's interesting. You can look it up on the internet. It's PPRTA. And then also, I do represent Green Mountain Falls on the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments. And that is Teller, Park, and us. Um, El Paso. You know, more, a bigger area. And uh, that seems to uh, do, do more for the mountains. But it's still kinda tricky cuz it includes a whole bunch of stuff. Lot of grants for buses in Colorado Springs and I don't know what else. If you wanna know more, I'd be glad to talk to you. So maybe somebody else would like to talk. Trying to think how many people on it. There, there aren't that many on the PPRTA, but we're, we're just two votes. And uh, there are all kinds of rules. I'll be quiet.
No worries. Thanks for the info, Ann. Always appreciated.
For everybody to come back. It's pretty rare when I'm back like before anyone else, this poor computer. But it looks like we have everybody. And with that, I will remind everyone that what is discussed in executive session does stay in executive session. We don't have votes there except for closing the meeting. And at this time, I would move that we resume our regular Board of Trustees meeting. It is eight thirty. I don't want to go too late, but the time is eight thirty. Is there a second to restarting this meeting?
I'll second it.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
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 That motion passes, so let us begin again with the wayfinding signage proposal presented by Jesse Stroop.
Hello, this is Jesse.
Hi, Jesse.
I'm having, hi there, I'm having some.
You're having some, please, I can hear you.
Yes, okay, so I'm gonna read this to you because I know you all got it in advance. But I started collecting information about comments for wayfinding signage back when we started looking at the parking plan and have worked with the task force to put together. So, so we looked at these signage towers and where they could possibly go in town, how they could be incorporated with existing signage and put together a budget for this. So here on this page is an example of one of the signage towers. And then if we go to the next page, Matt. After some comments from the task force, we started to do some design work, and this was one of the steps. Each one of these posts would be eight to ten feet tall, depending on the final design. They are twelve inch square Douglas fir beams with steel collars. There is the shape of an animal engraved at the top of each post. Each one would be different. And it's a modular system that's flexible, easy to change things out because like all things, it's unlikely that we get it perfect the first time around. So we like the flexibility of being able to change the subject. On the next page, Matt, we worked to put together a legend. And so there on the left is a legend, sort of assigning different activities to a color. So brown is recreational, which included trails, parks, and et cetera. Blue for parking and so on and so forth. So that's sort of how we came up with that and start to come up with some, some rules about how if adopted, this would influence our project as well as other signage in the community. So we have the legend there and then just some examples of some of the tiles. One of the ones that we spent a lot of the time talking about is the one on the far right, which is a larger tile, that's a twelve by twenty-four tile. And we envisioned those being on wayfinding signage towers at the entrance to each neighborhood, just as a way to say there's nowhere to park up here and if you don't own a home up here. We tossed around a lot of different ways to say that and keep it friendly, and this is sort of where we landed for now. But like I said, the beauty of this is it's changeable and we're just hopeful that, that people will will notice those and, and, and in hoping that people want to do the right thing, they will listen to these reminders. We did talk about specifically on that sign, maybe having some stronger wording on, say, Boulder Avenue, where that's really limited to five homes and, and there's no reason to take a car in there if, if you don't live there. So, so we could definitely have some stronger language where appropriate on these signs. And Matt, then if you will go to the next page, we have mapped out the proposed locations. So the blue hiker dot indicates the location of each of the ten towers that we are suggesting. So, so we're catching people as they enter town from either direction, sort of setting a standard and things to look at. And the towers at the entrances of neighborhoods and places that are easily identifiable from our trail visitors when they are at pool park. So, you know, language could be from the trail ambassadors, you know, go down three signs to the butterfly and make a ride on Hotel Street. So that was sort of what we were, what we were thinking and and are suggesting here. There's another type of sign here. We called it additional directional signage needed, where people may drop off of a trail and not be sure which way to go back to town. So we've suggested a couple of those locations there and we can continue to flush that out. Another thing that we talked about, which is important, is is increasing the number of trail markers from the Trails Ambassador's location to the trailheads at each trail. I, I think from the parking lot on Alath up to the Mount Dewey Trail, if you're not familiar with that, there's just not enough breadcrumbs to get from one to the other without, without being sure that you're going the right way. So we have included all of those items in our budget. Also in the budget, we have looked at the, at the condition of all of the current town signage and made some recommendations for those. And I will quickly step through those. I know it's been a long meeting, and so I'm going to rush through and then let you all ask questions. Matt, if you'll go on to the next one. And so on these, we've, we photographed each sign, done a condition report and then got an estimate from the signs company on what it would cost to repair and replace these as necessary. And I don't, I don't think I'll go through every one here. I think I'll just leave that for Q and A if you have questions on a specific one. You know, but the goals here are to make these, put them back to perfect condition and eliminate, you can even see on this one page, all of the extra signage that has been attached to these. And these could easily be made into signage tiles, which is what we're working with, with the signage towers. We could use to do the same at the restroom facility, Matt, if you want to scroll down to that. So as we were going through these, we just saw a lot of opportunities for ways to us to clean up the existing sound time, sound town signage before finally asking that we, you know, enforce some code and have unofficial signage removed so that, so that we are putting forth a universal message. I included the the poster board here, just as a way to spruce it up. And it's got some, some structural issues that need to be addressed. So all of those have budget numbers attached to them. You know, people were pretty passionate in the discussion about the town hall sign and what should be done with that. So quite a bit of time spent on the task force and through the P T, talking about what was important to, to the folks in that committee. So the next page, Matt, is the budget for this project. And so we're looking at ten of the signage towers, which come in at seventeen, seventeen hundred fifty dollars each. So you see our spend there and then a list of each one of the improvements that relate back to those photos. So our total signage package is twenty-five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars that we spent. On the right hand side of that, where I have volunteer or public works, those are some things that we could ask of public works or we could have a volunteer day to repaint some frames or do some minor tree trimming and things that. So beyond that twenty-five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars for signage from the thirty thousand dollars budget, we had a remaining four thousand one hundred fifty dollars. And I would suggest that we, since that grant was for wayfinding and parking, that we use those funds to move the split rail fence and change our parking along the tennis courts from parallel to diagonal. And that would, I believe that changes our, our parking capacity there from eight cars to twenty-two. And Matt, I think that's the last page of this presentation, so I'll ask for questions and comments.
Jesse, I'm really impressed at the work you and your committee have done on this. It's, it's very thorough. I really like it personally. Now, Warren, I'm waiting to hear what you say.
I think that, this is Deani, I think the unified signage, it, it just makes things so much easier to understand. And I think having some consistency throughout the town is going to visually look a lot better as well as I give some direction and just be much more useful.
Yeah, I, I.
Go ahead, Catherine.
Thanks. It's, yeah, I really like the, the design, the, the poles. You know, they'll be really easy to see from a distance or at least know where they are. I also like that signage for the neighborhoods. I really, I'm, I really think you did a really good job on that. I'm, I like the way it's worded and, you know, I'm hoping it's effective. And I do think some of those signs around the lake, you know, maybe at least one of them could completely go away. They're pretty redundant and after, you know, I, I like the suggestions that you've made, but at the same time, I kind of wonder how necessary some of those larger signs are. And just a couple of small things. The, I think we need a no outlet sign on Lake Street. And I don't know if that would just be, you know, like another little sign somewhere on an existing sign, but it's not apparent to people who aren't familiar that, that it pretty much dead ends and they're gonna have to turn around. So it's really only practical for parking. So, you know, it's not exactly a street. I guess is what I'm saying, I think. And this is something that some of the merchants have requested as well. And one other thing, and I don't know how much this is going to influence things going forward. But the the comprehensive plan erroneously names all the parks except Gazebo Lake Park. The research I've done, which has not been the easiest to find when it comes to the history of Green Mountain Falls, but I believe that is the only officially named park. And I think all the other names we use are unofficial and it would be great to take care of that. Seems like especially if we're coming up with signs, we need to do that. But, but also it's something I've been requesting when it comes to grant proposals. It'd be really nice if, if, you know, we were clear about the areas we're talking about when we're applying for grants. So anyway, I hope that wasn't too far out of the range of, of your presentation, but I thought it was all related. So thank you for all this work. It really looks great.
One other thing that I just wanted to kind of mention too, is that if some of those signs, you know, around the lake or at the gazebo are redundant or ineffective, instead of trying to repair them, we could also consider using them as like trying to repurpose them for something that's potentially maybe a different type of signage elsewhere within town. So we won't have to be paying the expense of creating something from scratch. I, just something to think about too.
I think that's fair. I would personally think the Lake Vision sign is probably done. It can probably go, but that's probably a conversation for a different day. Chris, you had comments you wanted to make.
I just wanted to echo, you know, how, you know, I think this is a really good, solid plan. I like the consistency in it. I like the thoughtfulness that was put into it as far as, you know, our, our residential traffic problems and things like that. And, you know, I do, I, I do agree with Catherine. If we don't have any formal names on these things and we're, you know, we should, you know, I, I would support, you know, memorializing these things or somehow making sure that they're properly delineated so we don't run into any issues like she was mentioning with grants or whatnot. But also just to, might be kind of a fun exercise to, with down the kind of, you know, have some say in, in the town and, you know, if they're not formally named, I think it would be kind of cool to, to take care of that.
I think that could be a really fun exercise. I think we could do a lot of good things with it. I also don't want to get in the way of the signing committee. So that may end up being something that we proceed with the signs. And then perhaps we'll have something at some point where we can have a contest or something to name the parks.
And I, Jesse, I don't, I don't, I don't think any of these signs really call out like this park or that park. Is that right? I mean, this wouldn't, that kind of action wouldn't affect anything you're doing here.
Well, and, and they will call out the parks. The good news about that though, is that if the name of a park changes or, or if a trailhead moves, if we need to change out one of these signage tiles, it's a twenty dollar expense.
That's great.
Yeah, I think we're on a good track there. Margaret, did you have anything to add?
You know, I do. I, I love this presentation. It's wonderful. One question I have though is have we evaluated all of the other junky signs that are around that maybe are irrelevant as well? And being able to get rid of those, not the ones that you had in your presentation, but just the silly little signs that are just all over the place. So, and, and I want to say, Jesse, thank you so much. For years, I've been saying we need to move that silly fence over by the pool so people can park diagonally instead of parallel. And I, I love that that's part of this presentation because I've, I've thought that and I've said that for, I don't even know how long. So thank you for that.
Great, great.
Do I hear a motion in that?
What, a motion to, to make better parking spaces over by the pool?
Oh, well, I thought you were making a motion to approve this wayfinding and parking proposal.
So yeah, absolutely. I can do that. I will, will approve that. And particularly because we do have the funding available for it.
I just want to know if that includes, you know, making some of the changes that we talked about with, you know, deciding down the road which signs are redundant or could be moved or that kind of thing. If, if we were to approve this proposal as it is.
So there was a, as Nancy mentioned on the chat, there was a comprehensive inventory that was done over the summer of listing all the signage. I think one of the issues is that a lot of those signs happen to be on private. Of listing all the signage. I think one of the issues is that a lot of those signs happen to be on private property. And so we don't really have the ability to take those down if they're on people's own personal property.
That's true, but we can control our town signage and also the guerrilla signs that get put up on town property. We can make sure that we can control those as well. So we have a motion on the table. Warren, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm still not clear about. What exactly we're voting on. I mean, I saw the proposal, but it seemed like there were some. Some questions about what we're gonna do with some particular signs. You know, like whether we would replace it or, or, you know, take it down. I don't want to hold anything up, but I just don't know. If we have to decide about that at this time. That's all.
I'll say that I think the approach would be for that is to go ahead and, and get our order in place for the signage towers.
Great.
And the tiles and start that project moving forward and then go through those recommendations. Maybe at the next meeting of the signage task force. And those are open for public input. And I think we could really start to hone in on what needs to be done with each one of those signs. For example, the mayor saying that, that the Lake Vision sign could probably go. I mean, that's, that is, that's a big help knowing things like we need a no outlet sign on Lake Street is a big help. So, so public comment in those meetings is, is helpful. And, and I think that based on the rec, if you look through those recommendations for each sign. We have a pretty good idea in which direction to go.
Okay.
And it's mostly about language decisions and, you know, what, what the rules should say if they need to be updated. And, and things like that. But looking at ways to reduce the sign pollution. You know, by taking down ten signs and putting everything onto one that is still an attention grabber and, and easy to understand. Is helpful.
Right. Well, I would love to see this move forward. So like I said, I don't want to. I don't want to slow anything down if we're able to just kind of fine tune it as we go. I'm comfortable with that.
I think that's where this is headed. And this is just giving permission to get started. It's kind of a living. Proposal, if you will, and this just gives. Some leeway to start ordering towers and signs. And I imagine this is gonna happen. A good part of the summer as things get changed and replaced. Chris, you didn't have a hand up. I have a weird thing on my computer.
Well, thanks. I'm ready to vote.
All right. With no further discussion, all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And hearing none, that motion passes. Thank you. Jesse, you're still up. This is the trail map proposal.
All right, Matt, I'll let you. It looks like Matt is gonna start with the virtual trailhead, which is fine if that's okay with you, mayor.
Yes.
So, so we talked about, I think previously in a BOT meeting, we talked about the need for. For a virtual trailhead and the possibility of making it. At Pool Park. And so through many meetings and discussions, one of the things that we kept getting stuck on is calling this a virtual trailhead. Which was sort of a hard pill to swallow and we, we found ourselves calling it a welcome center. So that is one of the recommendations. So I'm gonna read through the recommendation so we don't lose sight of those. One is to establish a welcome station in Pool Park to serve as a hub for trails ambassadors and information regarding Green Mountain Falls. This could easily grow into information beyond just the trails and we'd like to call that Green Mountain Falls Welcome Station. Second item is we'd like to relocate the trailhead from Lake Street to the location in Exhibit A below, which we'll talk about next. We'd like to update that trailhead with a trail map and trail information about all of the trails that folks will be able to get to. From that location. De'Annie Lou said to go for big asks, so we're gonna ask that we be able to use the restrooms in the pool building. During peak hours when the trails ambassadors are available. And like you said, it's a living document and, and that's a goal rather than having portallets out there. And then lastly is part of what I spoke about in the last thing, which is to reconfigure the. The parallel parking, two diagonal parking as shown and we'll look at that. In a later exhibit. I noted the great job that Public Works did on a late street. And feel like they are, it would be nice if they could do that work. We do have some budget dollars assigned to that and the budget dollars are more than enough to relocate that fence. So I just wanted to mention that. So then as we start to look at Exhibit A. We looked at this in a previous meeting. We've talked about it at PRT a couple of different times about different options. And really felt like this one was the best. So we're proposing having that trailhead. Right at the corner there off of Maple Street. This does not impact any of the existing parking. So we like that about it. We would relocate the trailhead there and we also would like to relocate the bear-proof trash cans. That are over by the tennis court to this location where we feel like they'd be better utilized. And so that is, that's the location, Matt. Then if you would drop down to the next. Slide, this is a sort of a template of what the new trailhead would look like. With a map and then a discussion of what trails are available, what their length are, a trail description. And then an area for the hiker five, which is the set of rules and regulations that are. We'd like to suggest to hikers about how we want to be treated and how we want our trails. Must be treated. Did and how to, in about, needing to bring your own map. Matt, if you'll scroll down. This is a sample of what that trail language would look like. And a sample of the hiker five. Which Nancy Dixon put together and will be included on the trail maps as well. And spoken to by, or spoken, spoken about by the trails ambassadors when they're out doing their work. And finally, on the last slide, Matt, is just a map that we. And shows where those parking spaces would be relocated that we talked about earlier. So our projects are sort of starting to merge together here as ways to make a big impact in this year's hiking season.
Hey Jesse, real quick, are any of those trees impacted along that split rail?
Um, I think that really depends on where you draw the line. I have not walked that myself. The last time that I looked at it, I felt like one tree would be impacted. And, and by that, I mean it could probably stay and we could probably split around it. Or we could decide to lose it, but at, at most, one of those trees would be impacted depending on where we put that line.
There's also one utility, I don't know what they're called, the little short utility pole things. That would probably have to be, have a rock in front of it or something and that would, that would lose one space. Because I don't think it could move back far enough where that one utility thing is.
Yeah, I think, and both of these are, are all things that we will figure out once we put the final plan together. But I at least wanted to get the ball rolling here.
Well, I think it's a great start. I will say this about the pool and for everyone who's listening. We need some help. The pool is being ready to open. I already walked through it with Dusty and he's, he's working on opening it. But the problem we're having is hiring lifeguards. So if you know young people that want to be a lifeguard and work in a. A pool for the summer, we need that and we actually need them before we'd be able to open the pool for the bathroom. Because we have no way to lock. Lock people so they can only get in the bathrooms. So get some, get some lifeguards hired. And I think we could have something to work with there.
And Madam Mayor, if I may. We did run into a staff with the pool. We don't yet have the quote to bring forward, but. We are getting that from the vendor. It is gonna be about five thousand dollars to fix the pump. In the well, the well pump is broken. They're guessing that's approximate. We don't have an official quote on that yet, but that is coming down the pike and we can include that in our amended budget discussion. That is upcoming.
So there's always something with the pool. There's no doubt about that. Anyway, trail map proposal. Warren, do you have questions for Jesse about this? Chris, go ahead.
Well, I just think it's great. I'd move to approve.
All right, there is a motion on the table.
I'll second.
Warren, do you have any further discussion on this item? Hearing none? I'm sorry, go ahead.
That was just a no, no further discussion for me.
It was very thoughtful and I think they did a fabulous job of putting together that feedback.
Yes, I am very impressed. I think it's gonna be very helpful. I like the hiker five. I, I really believe that most people take it to heart. Unfortunately, you always have one that spoils everybody's fun. So I'm glad it's out there in print and people will see it. We have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All, all in favor and unopposed, that motion passes. Next item on the agenda is item ten. It's the managed parking. Jessica and Gareth, you have stayed with us for a really long meeting. So here you go.
Mayor Newberry, apologies for interrupting. I think we might be behind on an agenda item. That last one, seven wayfinding and signage, and then the trail map proposal was.
You're right. I jumped ahead and Jesse, you're still on. It's about the trail map proposal.
Yeah, I will try to make it, I'll try to make it quick because we, we looked at all of this before in a BOT meeting. So. So the proposal really is to take this information, send it over to Pocket Pals and have them. Actually design out a trail map. So we would be providing the location to get from all the parking areas to trailheads. And we're, we're really looking at and advertising where the parking is on this map. So this isn't a final product and I apologize that it's blurry. Just technical difficulties with the person designing it. So we have these GPS coordinates and I'd like to turn them over to Pocket Pals. And have them go ahead and put this into a professional map. So the idea is to include all of this information and then, Matt, if you'll scroll down. The back of the map would then include. A short listing of the maps and the length of them and the change in elevation. It would include the hiker five. And we would add the town logo and website, a telephone number to report issues and emergency information. So the PRT thought that all of these things should be on the map and we just want to get approval to move forward with that. I don't have a cost to, to design and print. That is late coming in. I, I think that we can keep this expense under three hundred dollars though.
Well, what I appreciate about it is right now it is just the trailheads, which is what we're looking at right now as we move ahead with some of it. You know, discussions and conflicts we might have with other trails, but it is a great start and I really appreciate this. Warren, what questions do you have?
Are we going to put porta potty or restroom locations on there?
Absolutely, we can add that on.
Warren, anything further?
Will the town, um, basically own the map? Is there any, are there any issues with? As far as.
And that, and that's the reason Catherine, I want to send it over to Pocket Pals so that the town has full ownership of it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good question. I'm glad you asked that. Angie, is this budgeted?
So, um, the Pocket Pals map creation, I'm sorry, how much was that, Jesse?
I'm estimating three hundred dollars.
Okay, um, there's a, there's a trails maintenance budget of about four thousand dollars. To my knowledge, none of that has yet been spent. This could certainly go to trails maintenance.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Warren, if there's nothing further. I would move to approve this proposal.
A second.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 None opposed, that motion passes. And now we are on to the managed parking discussion. Jessica or Gareth?
Yeah, so we put together a bridged version of the presentation we did last time. If we could, we could bring that up, that's probably a good starting point.
Gareth, I wasn't sure if you wanted to share your screen, if you'd like me to, to drive the, drive the bus.
That'd be great if you drove the bus. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. I'll make that happen. No worries.
Yeah, so basically we tried to just condense our presentation into three slides. We, since the last meeting, we went, we met with the mucky, we met with the blue moose. And we met with the pantry and we got some additional feedback. The big thing I wanted to, and it's great always to, you know, hear from people and talk to people. Louise and Danny who are on the call right now, we're in town again today getting some more feedback. Our programs are very adaptive. We've just, as most people know, we're involved in Breckenridge and Idaho Springs. And Breckenridge is over close to four years now and Idaho Springs is over two years. And what we started with and where we are now has changed quite a bit. So we're always looking at ways to improve the experience for locals. And, you know, what we start with and where we're at now in those two towns. Is quite different and it's been quite effective. Both towns are in the process of extending us for. Quite a bit longer terms, which is a great sign. We're also, I can't really say which towns, but we're also in the process right now with three other. We're also, I can't really say which towns, but we're also in the process right now with three other towns in Colorado. We're having very similar discussions that we're having with Green Mountain Falls right now. And, you know, every, every solution is different. The parameters of the demands and the supply and whatnot. So we've basically come up with a different solution for each one. And, you know, after discussing with the blue moose and the pantry and the ice cream shop and the mucky, we, we made a couple of adjustments. And then we also really wanted to narrow down what we're, what we're doing here. And really, the program is, is designed for locals. And we really want to make sure that residences, residents and businesses feel that, you know, we're here to support them and accomplish their goals. Jess, do you want to go through each bullet point and sort of elaborate on each one?
Yeah, so what we come up with after speaking with all the businesses, our majority that we met with, we came up with that it's best to have like free two hour parking for all users. Therefore, everybody there gets free two hours, your restaurant tables, everybody has that time to eat at a restaurant or do whatever they need to do. All the residents of Green Mountain Falls have free parking. All the employees have free parking. There's, we're going to set some free pickup zones. Therefore, people can grab takeout, ice cream, whatever the case may be. And then what we talked about too, big time, was with the pantry is the waitlist. They sometimes are on hour-long waitlist. So therefore their time won't start until they sit down in the restaurant. So we've kind of established some parameters with the pantry for to ensure that happens. And again, free parking after 5:00 PM. And this is only during Friday to Sunday and holidays, summer only. And again, this is a capital cost for interstate, nothing to the town.
Yeah, and just a couple notes there, you know, when we talked to the, to the mucky and the blue moose, you know, they felt that two hours is usually a good timeframe for, you know, patrons to their facilities. They were pretty comfortable with that. The, you know, the blue moose was very happy that, you know, after five o'clock, basically it's, it's completely free and not managed because they were concerned about when they have live bands and whatnot. And with the pantry, we have a pretty cool system where he can use a, basically a tablet and add people to the waitlist so that if they're, you know, waiting for the reservation, they're going to be over two hours. He will communicate that to us and we won't issue a violation. We'll be aware of that individual. And yeah, I, you know, I just wanted to make it clear, you know, it's only Friday to Sunday during the summer. And, you know, there's no upfront cost for the town. So those were really, from the feedback we got from all the businesses, those are all key points that we just wanted to stress with everyone.
Right.
If you want to go to the next slide, be great, please. So we tried to, there were some questions about interstate as a company. And, you know, we're a small business, you know, we're based in Colorado. I'm an owner. It's not a large corporation. We really pride ourselves on our people and the communities we work with. We consider it a big honor to work with you guys and we hope we can make this work. And then we, we really wanted to narrow down the parking spaces. So we created a map. You know, and talked to Angie and Virgil and tried to narrow down all the spaces. So that gives you a pretty good overview. That's by no means definitive, you know. I guess I got to stress again, this is very adaptive. Once we get feedback, everything and anything is open to discussion and agreement. We've probably changed, since we started Breckenridge, we've probably changed 150 things. There was a different town council meeting last night. There was a former business owner from Breckenridge that has moved to another town. They spoke about how adaptive we were and how we changed things and we got it to, to a situation where, you know, residents love the system and businesses love the system. So that's really our goal. Yeah, could you go to the next slide, please? Jess, you want to talk about the QR codes? I think it's really cool with what Jesse's doing would be QR codes on all our signage would be very useful for the trailheads. Maybe Jess, you can expand on that a little bit.
So a plan was to maybe work with the town to adapt a trailhead map that people could scan through the parking system as well. So therefore they're all integrated together. So if you pay to park, you can actually scan the trailhead map and figure out where you need to go and which direction. So we kind of, we're going to work together with the town to maybe adapt something to that, to that need. So that's kind of our plan right now. And hopefully we can get, implement that for the summer. And that's kind of where we're at.
Yeah, and, you know, there's really, for, for the people that stay over, and the mayor made it quite clear, you know, the first two hours are free, the third hour is $2, the fourth hour is $2. So you can literally park for four hours, which we think that would be a pretty long hiking trip. So $4 for a hiking trip seems pretty fair. You have the ability to pay by the solar kiosks that are pictured here. And/or the QR code, which is a real simple process. We, we found that 75 to 80% of people love the QR codes for payment. You can add time, you can, you know, go to the, go to the pantry, get your coffee, take care of your parking. Pretty effective system. And then it would communicate to the pantry for their waitlist. It all, it's all, it's license plate recognition technology. It's pretty cool. And we have our ambassadors, like you can see in our picture here, that's Shelby, our general manager in Breckenridge, and one of our ambassadors of the year, Jordan. And, you know, we've got great local people and they really become, you know, a tool for the community. They can be reached during operating hours to help with any and all issues. And they're great ambassadors for where's the gazebo, where's the ATM, all those things. So, and Jess, do you want to just talk a little bit about the website?
Yeah, so then you have our, we would brand it Park Green Mountain Falls website. Therefore, you can go there if you want to just send us a quick note, hey, I'm having a party tonight, or I need to reserve a few spaces, whatever the case may be. We're always there to answer those. If somebody gets a violation, they can pay it online, contest it online, whatever the case is. The website's 24/7 and we have a local team that's going to be answering those emails at all times.
Yeah, and those, those websites are pretty effective. You could see brackpark.com, Park Idaho Springs, Park Keystone. We handle all that. It becomes a great tool for the community. Like I said, we end up posting a lot of other things that, events like, for example, the mobile COVID vaccinations are posted on our Brack Park website right now. And I think the ultimate goal is to, you know, generate some revenue for the town that can ultimately be reinvested in the community, whether it's, you know, signage, improvements to the washrooms, improvements to the gazebo lake. In both Idaho Springs and Breckenridge, we've generated a lot of revenue, you know, from visitors that goes back into the community. And they've done some great projects on sidewalks in Idaho Springs, the
The flower beds.
Yeah, natural gas powered trolleys in Breckenridge. So we really see it as a partnership, a win-win. And we really want to work with locals so that, you know, once we implement this, we'll continue to adopt it and get it to, to where it works for everyone. That's, you got anything else to add, Jess?
I think we covered it all from this meeting and the last one. These are just the really key points we wanted to hit on.
All right. We have a public comment and question and answer segment now. I am going to ask public that you please still respect the three minutes. If you have a statement to make and we will do our best to answer the question, whether it's from interstate or whether it's something one of us can answer, we will do that. So if we are ready for that, Rocco Blazey, you are the first on my list.
Yeah, hi, Rocco Blazey, 10955 Velvet Deer Avenue. I'd just like to remind the trustees and audience that nothing in the town's comprehensive plan specifies paid parking for our future. Neither does the consultant you commissioned to study this issue. In fact, there are many steps short of paid parking to consider. This current proposal frankly disregards those recommendations. I urge the trustees to respect the process that you began last summer. I think Gareth mentioned that $4 for a hiking trip seems fair. And I understand the mayor didn't understand the big deal requiring a visitor to pay a few dollars to park. But I think it needs to be kept in mind that Catamount Trail, the town's most popular trail, is three miles one way to the reservoir. A six-mile round trip takes time. Returning hikers will rush to their vehicles and leave town before patronizing our businesses, enjoying a drink or meal. Damage done. Our businesses are an economic engine, providing vitality to our community year-round. I don't believe any of them were considered stakeholders in this process, and that's a detrimental oversight. I'm encouraged with the town's progress with regard to signage, maps, and a designated welcome center. These are initiatives already underway that will go a long way toward the town managing visitors using the resources we already have at our disposal. Please understand the important distinction between managed parking and paid parking. Paid parking is an extreme measure. In essence, by ignoring the recommendations of the consultant, which were short of paid parking, you've thrown out the playbook before the game has even started. Given these intermediate steps, give them a shot. We're implementing wayfinding, finding and signage anyway. Going back to a comment from last meeting, what's the rush? Let's be clear, the proposal you're considering goes far beyond managed parking. It's clearly paid parking. There are many against such a life-altering decision to the future of our community. Please slow down.
All right, thank you. Jake Keita, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Jen. I hope everyone can hear me. I just make a quick comment. I have seen that the interstate system is fairly effective in Breckenridge. But again, I'd point that the load in Breckenridge is much more concentrated, much more channeled to the area immediately opposite the ski, access to the skiing gondola and bus system. The residential area in Breckenridge rarely sees random parking and intrusions of the type that have concerned people in Green Mountain Falls. I'd be concerned that there isn't enough to sustain the business here. It's a very, it's a, although the, although the impact to the community is large, the overall community is quite small. And we don't have hundreds of Parker, hundreds of people coming up, although it seems that way at times. The load on the system is quite small. Then the system that has been proposed by interstate may not be, or may be unsuited to the level and character of the town. I just point to that and just say that the board of trustees should consider that closely as they evaluate the system. That's about all I can comment there.
All right, Jake, thank you. Todd Dixon.
Yeah, can you hear me? Okay, my name is Todd Dixon. I live at 11045 Iona Avenue. And I'm actually one of the people who's okay with having managed parking. My reasons are twofold. First, I believe Green Mountain Falls needs to get on top of the tourism. I say this because with the influx of people into the front range area, it's extremely likely that tourism in the Green Mountain Falls will increase. I do not expect that it will ever decrease, which means we will need to deal with a new normal. We have a nice quaint, small mountain town, and that in and of itself will attract the tourists. Managing the parking is the step in the right direction to help keep tourism from becoming chaotic. My second reason, having a revenue source outside of sales and property taxes helps keep local residents' costs down. As I look at our 2021 budget, it looks to me like we are at a point where our elected officials will need to consider either raising taxes or cutting services in the not-too-distant future. Having another source of income can greatly enhance the ability of our town to continue a slow, steady growth pace. Managed parking can provide a funding source that is not dependent upon local taxpayers. While property values and therefore tax revenues are increasing, the expenses that, that are, the expenses are increasing as well, especially for materials and especially lately. And I would not count on increased property values aiding our ability to maintain slow, steady growth. In closing, I was on a school board in Kansas for eight years. I saw firsthand the issues that happen when costs exceed the existing revenues. Every year, we had to either cut something or raise the local taxes. Most of the time, we had to do a combination of both. We did not have the ability to generate revenue from tourism that the town of Green Mountain Falls has. I therefore encourage the board to vote to approve the managed parking proposal. And I do have a question, and it is, have we worked out the details of the residency for the out-of-state property owners? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Gareth, that might be a question for you. We do have a lot of people who have part-time homes, so their cars are probably registered in Kansas or wherever. Will they just go to town hall and work with your employees to register?
Yeah, the, the license plate jurisdiction is, doesn't matter to us as long as it's a registered vehicle.
Right, and you can register online at any time, 24 hours a day.
Okay, and you'll help us get that word out to all of our summer people.
Absolutely.
It'll be, it'll be very clear on the website.
Okay, great. And Judith Piazza, you are the last person I have in the comment list.
Okay, thank you. I'm at 11160 Velvet Deer. So dear trustees, I'm making a last attempt to provide reasons why the town's managed parking plan should not be approved. At the last meeting, all the residents spoke were against the paid parking plan, except for maybe one or two. And many questions were raised as to the terms of the contract being considered. Here are a few other reasons why I truly hope the board will not approve moving forward with this plan. Early assurances confirmed that the town would consider alternatives and community input regarding Parker, parking and visitor considerations. Yet, here we are with alternatives that also address managed parking. They are managed parking plans, such as the ambassador program on wayfinding signage, being put into place. Thank you so much, trustees, for doing that tonight. But the BOT is voting on paid parking nonetheless simultaneously to these other alternatives. I understand there's been lots of town time invested in this project, but there's still time to turn away from a plan that most of the town's residents and businesses do not want. One, the town has not allowed for these alternatives to be tried for a full season. Why wouldn't you want to experience these alternatives first? They have more residential support. They don't include changing the flavor of GMF with money considerations. with money considerations and will be much easier to enforce. Initially, Mayor Newberry, you spoke that the money from paid parking could be useful, of course. But Jonathan based early financial predictions on inaccurate information. And even Gareth, at the last meeting, spoke clearly that this particular paid parking plan would not amount to much income, if any. Other income sources, such as business licenses in the town, which is a whole other thing, might be looked at. Another reason, it was decided months back to move forward with the, with information assessment with the idea that a three-month trial experiment might be approved. Now we have a two-year contract with sketchy details that will be a further plan. To act with integrity, I'm asking you trustees to speak clearly in alignment, to act in alignment with what you spoke and publicly communicated as far as the experiment, a trial. Another reason, not all actions should be voted on in a town. I feel like there's so much resistance to this plan that that should just signal, let's stop this action and consider these other alternatives first. Lastly, I won't get into nuts and bolts of enforcement, but I will say that visitors who want to park for free will be driving in residential neighborhoods, no matter what the signage says, to try to find free parking. As Virgil has stated, he cannot keep drivers off residential streets. This is a major problem. In closing, I ask that the trustees consider incrementally experimenting with lower footprint, lower-impact programs with less resistance in the town. That may have a huge influence, rather than this drastic move that will forever change the flavor of our small town. Please vote no on the present contract and decision to move forward with a paid parking program. Thank you for hearing me.
All right, thank you. I have two more people, three more people that want to have a comment. And see if we have questions and answers, then board, it is going to be our time for discussion. Let's see. I'm just saying where I was at. Mike Frey?
I, I wonder what are the income projections for Green Mountain Falls and for Interstate? It would seem if we're only doing paid parking for three days a week for three months out of the year, there isn't going to be very much money, and I'm wondering if Green Mountain Falls will see any revenue. And I wonder, from the standpoint of Interstate, whether they'll see enough to make it worth their while. And if there's not much revenue in it, what's the point?
Gareth, I think you can kind of answer that. It is your business.
Right. Yeah, you know, it really depends on the final decisions on, on everything. But with this current rate structure, we're projecting in the neighborhood of $75 to $80,000 in revenue for the first season. So that would equate to about $40,000 for the town. As, as this program is in its initial stages, the, the programs in Idaho Springs and Breckenridge, as they evolved, have generated substantially more. So there's, there is that potential. But, you know, this is, this is like the mayor said, this is starting slowly and trying to create a program that'll work for everyone. So, yeah, that would be the expectation for, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday during the summer season, eight hours a day.
Gareth, may I ask a clarifying question on that? In that, in that number, how much of that is straight revenue? How much of that is like from ticket?
Sorry, what was the last part of that question?
I'm just wondering, when you, when you come to that estimation, how much of, like, how much of the revenue that you see is from violations versus just paying the two bucks or whatever?
Yeah, so we're running, we're running approximately 75 locations in Colorado with a very similar system. And we're seeing about 90, 98% compliance. So, you know, either people register their vehicle for the two hours free or they pay for the additional hour or the, or subsequent hours. So very, a very small percentage of the revenues generated from violations. Our real goal for the ambassadors, the website, and the easy payment platforms, and the ability for residents to register and employees to register support people to under. And as a result, we, you know, have that 98%.
Well, I, I thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, I was just, when you were, you know, it just jumped in my head. It was out of curiosity.
Sure, sure. So it's about, I would say it's about 2% of, of the gross revenue.
That's great. Thanks.
This is Mike Frey.
And just, just sorry, just one other point I'd just make on that. Sometimes people get confused on our description of net revenue. So net rev, we call it net revenue because it's basically just gross revenue, less credit card fees and transaction fees. So the town would be getting, you know, their 50% split basically on gross revenue, just less the credit card fees, which we know everybody has to pay, and the transaction fees for the QR code. There are no transaction fees for the kiosks.
All right, David Douglas, and then we'll have Lamar.
Jane, I'm sorry. I kind of jumped in front of Mike. Will you, will you finish?
I just wanted to ask one more question. I'm wondering if the trustees have considered the revenue loss that they might have from sales tax revenue if the businesses begin to suffer losses or reductions in revenue because of this?
Yeah, I think we have some interesting data maybe on that.
Yeah, I could, I could answer Idaho Springs. The business tax is taxed since we got involved, and of course, we've been involved during COVID. And also, we lost some spaces. I don't know if you've been along I-70, but there was some construction there. But the business tax has been up about 12%. And if you talk to individual businesses, their revenues are up in the 20% range. One of the things to realize is that what happens with our, sorry. One of the things, one of the things that happens with our system is, and we talked to the mucky about this and also the blue moose and the pantry, is that you end up turning the spaces a lot more than you're turning now. So when we started, before we got involved in Idaho Springs, those spaces were turning one and a half times. Now, on the main street, on Minor, they're turning seven times a day. So now restaurants are getting seven turns of their tables. So that's why you see the increase in, in business tax, and generally you see the increase in, in revenues for businesses. So it's, and it's, we've had the same impact in, in Breckenridge, obviously, to a much larger degree.
All right, so we have one more, and that would be Lamar Matthews.
Thank you. I want to thank Ann team for the work you've done on this and all the listening that you've done and the adjustments that have been made. My concern and comments tonight are about the parking contract that is included in our packet this evening. If this is approved, I'm wondering if this will be our parking contract. And if so, my concerns are that there's little to no escape clause in this contract. There's very little performance contractually required by Interstate. For example, the company is not contractually obligated to do any criminal background or drug screening of employees. Therefore, the town has no out if a criminal or drug-addicted employee is placed on our streets. I understand that these employees are not employed by the town, but I believe that the town may have some liability if any of our citizens or visitors are harmed by these individuals because, because we did not insist on this protection in the contract. Current contract, page three, section 4.1, only requires screening, and it is defined. The contract previously presented in January provided for all payments to come directly to the town, and an invoice would come from Interstate with the town able to withhold in part or whole if the invoice is incorrect or incomplete. The current contract only gives us the right to receive 50% net revenues along with a statement on the 15th of the month. We have the right to audit the records with 15 days' notice, but by contract, we have no other recourse. If we disagree with the amount, we are sent. The town previously had the right to build Interstate for any maintenance or upkeep of any elements of their parking system if they are not doing it at $50 an hour. We no longer have this provision in our current contract. The previous contract contractually obligated Interstate to provide a monthly log of complaints received and how each was resolved. This is no longer contractually required. Previously, Interstate was contractually obligated to respond to after-hours requests in residential permitting areas after 5:30 to 9:00 p.m., within an hour. Requests after 9:00 p.m. would have received requests, that responses by 10:00 a.m. the next morning. We no longer have that provision. The previous contract had contractual obligation for provisions for commercial parking zones and residential permit parking-only zones. The new contract has no mention of this. But the consultant had recommended, and the board has had approved his recommendations, that we could program Friday through Sunday, summer, hour six to four. I do not find this in the current contract, even though I realize verbally we've gotten some promises like this, but I don't see it in the contract. I was disappointed to see that no changes or due diligence was done on this contract. After our last meeting, I continued to offer help if asked, but this is a pretty good list to start with.
Would you, would you like to read a comment?
Gareth, would you please?
Yeah, yeah, but, I mean, the contract is by no means finalized. Criminal background checks, I mean, to go through every and all issues. I, I mean, I'm more than willing to do that. I don't think I could answer each and every one of those, those points. But, you know, I, I do, I, I do handle the contracts myself, so I'm more than willing to go through anything and, and discuss it with you and, and find a resolution. There is a clause there that if the town is not happy, they have the right to notify us, and if we don't rectify it within a timeframe, that you can cancel. So that's a pretty common clause that we use. But if there's other things that you would like included, it's, I, I generally, I've negotiated probably 10, 10 different municipal agreements, and I've always been able to find something that's equitable to both parties. So, yeah, we, we, we take a long-term perspective. We want to make this work. So if there's some things you'd like changed, we'll definitely work with you to get, get them where you want to, want them to be.
You, I can tell that you are very willing to work with towns, and I appreciate it. My biggest concern is just that the town had not done the work on the contract to ask you for these provisions. And again, I offer my help to get a good contract in place that protects the town.
Sure, I definitely will work with you on that. Not a problem. Not a problem at all.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to end with a public question and answer, because I have the feeling we could be here all night, and we have been having all these questions for some time. There was just one further question, and anyone from Interstate can answer it. If we decide that this isn't working and you need to have your equipment back, whose responsibility is it? I assume it's Interstate's?
Yes. You know, the, the real beauty of our system is, you know, really the, the only things that are even slightly permanent are the kiosks. We've created plates that they can be bolted into concrete, brick, asphalt, dirt, gravel, whatever, and we can literally remove those on a moment's notice. So, yes, in our contract, it, it states that we will return the location to its, its former self. So, you know, like I said, we haven't had to do that yet in our 75 locations in Colorado. So our name is everything, and if you want to speak to any other towns or any of our other clients, we're all about customer service and, and making things work. So our goal is to work with your community, and, you know, 10 years from now, we're, we're great friends, and we found something that works for everyone. But yes, if, if that was to occur, yeah, we would return everything to its, its former state.
All right, thank you. Board, I know that you will have further questions. I wanted to, to answer a few questions that have come up over time and give some observations that I have had, and then, board, I'm going to turn it over to you. So here they are. Here's the first statement. No one took the survey. They selected who would want to take, who they wanted to take it. We know that the town sent a postcard advertising the survey website to every people who walks in town. Additionally, it was advertised at numerous meetings, the website, and on Facebook. Yes, many people took the survey. No, we did not choose who was allowed to answer. It was entirely voluntary. Board, are you listening? No one wants this. Actually, the majority of people are in favor of managed parking, which you can also call paid parking. We listened last summer, as well as the lead-up to this discussion. There are people who attend the meeting, and there are people who don't. There are people who have contacted the board outside of these meetings, partly because they do not enjoy the angry repartee. What happened to the Facebook petition? No one wants this. Although the petition was not a legal petition, we did look at it and read it. And the petition was misleading. It led people to believe that we were installing parking meters, which is not true. We don't want parking meters either. They are springing this on us, on us, and ramming it down our throats. The town employees and the board have been discussing this for nearly 11 months. Surveys, multiple meetings, multiple discussions have taken place, and there have been many opportunities for discussion, including today. Every discussion, every decision that is made is an open vote. There are no secret meetings. We are a hiking town. No, actually, we are a residential town. The board's first responsibility is to the people who live here, who are on vacation homes here, and the businesses that are run here. The parking company has thoroughly discussed options with the businesses to everyone's satisfaction. We saw both through the anonymous survey and through numerous complaints last year that the hiking and parking accompanying the hiking was distressing the majority of citizens who either live here or own summer homes here. It was demanded of us to do something. The board is just money hungry and will become addicted to the money brought in by the parking. The board, like everyone else, is keenly aware of what things are needed and wanted to make Green Mountain Falls a pleasant experience. New upgraded bathrooms, renovated parks, improved sidewalks within the park, and so on and so forth. Unfortunately, all these things come at a cost. Three Mountain Falls does not have enough of a budget. If we make money off parking, it will allow us to spend some money on the items that we have without raising property taxes. I'm sure you heard Todd say the same thing. The majority finances that support town operations come from property tax, not sales tax, not road and bridge, not a magical money tree. We, as a town, need to be aware of when there's a chance to make financial decisions to improve this situation for everyone here. Additionally, it was a goal of the comprehensive plan to have visitors pay for some of their expenses, and this is one way to do that. What are the board members getting out of this? Do we get a financial reward? Every member of the board is 100% a volunteer. Despite the countless hours spent on town business, we don't get a salary. We don't get a bonus. We don't get a dime, not from your taxes, not from parking. I had a really interesting thing happen to me, and I don't know, I don't know what the intent was, but it was really interesting information. As many of you know, my personal phone number was put up in several of the businesses with a sign that said, "Call the mayor if you want to complain about paid parking. Call the mayor." So out of the phone calls that I received, the vast majority who were opposed to any sort of paid parking don't live in Green Mountain Falls. They were not residents. People opposed. The other portion of really interesting information is out of the calls I got, not one, not a single one was a hiker. So does, so that leads you to two interesting conclusions. Either the hikers don't mind the thought of paying for parking or they don't go to the businesses. It could be either one and we don't know, but that law of unintended consequences did give us interesting information. Uh, Board, this is a highly charged conversation. I want you to have a chance to ask questions and give comments. I will call on you one at a time and we will try to get some order out of this as we go a little later. And Chris Quinn, I'm going to call on you first.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, first off, Gareth, I want to thank you Interstate, you know, you're, you're, you know, from what I can see from your effort here, you know, you're, 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 you would really be a great partner, uh, you know, for any, for any town, I think, with, uh, the generosity that you're showing and, and, you know, that initiative and things like that. So I do want to thank you. You know, I'm, I'm struggling with this, you know, personally, I'm, I'm, I'm really not in favor, but you know, as a representative of the town, you know, I'm not, I'm not hearing, you know, for whatever the reasons, I'm, I'm just not hearing a lot of support for this and I, I kind of agree with the sentiment that I'm hearing. I think, you know, managed parking, managed parking, it doesn't mean paid parking. You know, I think, I think from, you know, seeing what we're, we're being presented with, I think, you know, a lot of these things, we could possibly take a shot at ourselves and I think there's a lot of motivation in the town, um, you know, to kind of support that effort and hopefully this engages, you know, our citizens. But, you know, I, I, you know, and perhaps, you know, if we look at, you know, more robust commercial or some other ways at, at, at bringing in some, some business income, I, 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 I think, you know, I understand, I understand the money part of it, but I just, I'm not hearing enough from the town itself to, to support a move like this. I think we should, you know, keep it in our back pocket and, uh, you know, maybe at some point in the future, this becomes something that makes sense, but at this point, I, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't see a lot of support in the town and I understand the rationality behind it and, you know, how it makes sense in so many ways, but I just think for the town, it's a good fit at this point. But I would, you know, be supportive, you know, pushing this down the road, maybe working on the contracts. It sounds like we have some engagement with the businesses and, you know, I, I don't see them here to support it. You know, they may have commented and, and had some, you know, discussions around it, but I really didn't hear that they were supportive. I may be wrong, I don't know, but, you know, I think the general sentiment that I'm, I'm hearing, I can't support it on behalf of the town. And thank you.
All right, thank you, Chris. Catherine?
Thank you, Mayor. My first concern is still a concern and that is about internet access. You know, forgive me if it's in there, in this information and I didn't find it. But, um, connectivity is a real issue here and I don't know how that's going to be addressed. So that's, um, a, uh, an ongoing concern. But I also, um, and, um, one of my other concerns and one of my interests in supporting managed parking is the illegal parking or the parking up in the neighborhoods that I think is a potential hazard if we ever needed to evacuate. And, um, you know, parking is free now and people are still parking, uh, in, in areas where they shouldn't. And I mean, areas that are clearly marked, areas where people have placed boulders, you know, it's not like, it isn't clear that they are parking where they should not. And, um, so my question is, does, does the code enforcer go beyond the parking areas when they're looking for parking violations? And, um, uh, and I also want to just thank you for speaking with the business owners. I've made some attempt to talk to some of the business owners, um, as a representative of the Chamber of Commerce and I've, and it's been nearly, it's been impossible for me to convince them that we're not going to have parking meters. So I really appreciate you addressing that.
All right, thank you, Catherine. Janie?
Hi, yes, uh, so I really appreciate, you know, Interstate taking the time to talk to our community and making those changes and giving us this information and being so engaged with working with us. You know, it sounds like for, uh, Breckenridge and Idaho Springs that this has been a really useful program and it's generated a lot of really good revenue and helped manage the situation they have here, that they have there. You know, one of the, the questions that I had brought up at the last meeting was about signage and I don't really see anything in this revised, uh, presentation that addresses any type of signage. And so that was my biggest concern is, you know, how are people supposed to know, uh, where they're parking and how much they're supposed to pay apart from just having a kiosk and a, uh, and a website? If they're from out of town, they're going to drive up and they're going to, uh, see spaces. So I, I guess that was one of my big questions is just what kind of signage is anticipated? Because any signage is going to potentially have a big impact on the way our town looks and feels. So that's my first question.
Maybe Jessica, can you answer that?
Yeah, so we, oh, good. Sure, Gareth.
Sorry, I, I didn't know, I didn't know if we were supposed to, uh, answer those questions. So, sorry about that. On the, um, I'll, I'll, I'll go through the three questions I think we're at right now. So on the, um, the machines operate via cellular. So we have a, a, a means of checking the, the cellular signal, um, for, for the kiosks. They're solar powered, they're battery powered, so they're charged by the sun. So the cellular's, the, the cellular strength there is adequate for the kiosks. So we've done that test. This, the, the signage, um, we've developed pretty extensive signage packages in both Breckenridge and Idaho Springs. We, we make suggestions to you. It's all subject to your approval, um, in terms of branding, in terms of size of the signs, color of the signs. It's all your final say. Uh, we provide you with, uh, samples, um, and, uh, you know, ultimately it's your say on that. And, uh, the last question, sorry, on the residential areas, uh, we will monitor that. So, uh, I guess one of the things I haven't sold everybody on is that the locals will have the phone number for the ambassador who's available during that nine to five timeframe. And, you know, if there's somebody parked in a residential area that shouldn't be, we will issue, issue a violation to that individual if, if the town so chooses. You know, Idaho Springs is very similar in a lot of ways that the residential area is, is very close to the, to the area where the demand is and, uh, we've had the same program there and it's, uh, you're welcome to speak to any residents in Idaho Springs, but they literally have, uh, gotten to the point and you can go to our, uh, feedback page on the website, but, you know, they've been so helpful in the residential areas that, you know, our employees are offered cookies and all kinds of things. So, uh, we really help in that area. I think those were the three questions, okay, unless I missed something.
Yeah, so just to follow up to that, so, sorry if I'm, I'm just not understanding this technology part of it. I understand that the, the kiosks themselves are solar powered and that they're able to connect independently based on their own source of power and, uh, the way that they're functioning. But me as a consumer, if I'm a hiker and I come up and I have zero signal and I try and use that Q R code, how do I access that Q R code?
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, you do need to, you do need to have cellular service. So the hiker, if they, like, I mean, they're going to, uh, be in those two hundred and fifty spaces. So those two hundred and fifty spaces have cellular service. The only thing they might want to do is, you know, add time, you know, for example, if they go overtime, and they, they would have to get somewhere with, um, cellular service for that. You know, and those kind of circumstances, if they were to contact us and say, hey, you know, I paid for, um, you know, I had two hours free, I paid for another two and it went over. You know, we understand that it's all about, um, the visitor experience. We would, we would easily take care of that violation.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess, uh, Mayor, my other comments are that, you know, I think, I think the Q R code seems like one of the major benefits to the system. And so to not have access to that and to just have it be a kiosk, I think takes away a lot of the functionality of the system as compared to some of the other sites. So that, that's, you know, unfortunate just based on our circumstances with the cellular, uh, that we couldn't access that feature really. You know, fifteen kiosks.
You can't, you, you can't access that feature anywhere that has cellular service. So anywhere in town, you can use a Q R code. It's just if you're on a hiking trail, you know, and you want to add time, that's the only time you wouldn't be able to do it.
Okay.
If, if there's no cell service.
Okay. Yeah, uh, yeah, my other, my other.
Yeah, Q R, Q R. Sorry, the Q R code, uh, the Q R code has become sort of the preferred mode of, of usage with us. It's probably about seventy to eighty percent of our transactions because it's very convenient. You can literally do a transaction in three seconds.
Yeah, and you don't necessarily need an app, which is very convenient.
Okay. Um, I mean, I think it sounds like a great program to help manage parking. I think there are a lot of questions that we still have from our town and also with the town changing with this, uh, new project that's going to be starting, uh, with the art installation. And so my concern is that given COVID that happened yesterday, that last year, with all the changes that are happening right now and the changes that we're planning with our signage, that we just need to think about what we're doing a little bit more. Installing fifteen of these kiosks with bright yellow pilings is, is, is not the, the prettiest, I, I have to say, just to point out, uh, thing for our town. So I think it's, it's a big investment if we're going to move forward with this. Uh, and so, you know, I'm, I'm not entirely opposed to it because I think it is a good way to manage traffic control. I just don't know that we're at the point where we need to install fifteen of these and go through with a comprehensive plan right now. So those are, those are kind of my initial thoughts about it.
I, I apologize, I'm still not clear about the whole cellular connectivity. I've had problems, uh, with cellular connectivity in town, especially in the downtown area.
Yeah, um, you know, all of our towns do have that, whether it's Idaho Springs or, or Breckenridge, but there's a strong enough signal for those kiosks. What they do is they grab it periodically. So, um, like, for example, a credit can, uh, like, you can do the transaction and then it'll download the transaction when it, um, gets the strength of the cellular feed that it needs. So, um, you know, for example, we've got these kiosks installed at ski resorts that don't have great, uh, reception, for example, in Utah and California. So they're designed with that in mind. So, um, yeah, that's, that's how they work. So it, you don't need five, you, you don't need a five-band, for example.
For someone with a cellphone, if like I wanted to scan for a trail map, is the, is the tower itself or the kiosk itself going to give my phone connectivity so that I can scan a Q R code for a trail map? Uh, I mean, how does that work exactly?
So, yeah, it would take you to, uh, wherever the, um, the, um, trail map is posted. The Q R code would take you there.
Yeah, but in order to access the Q R code, wouldn't I need some type of internet signal at all on, on my cellphone?
Yeah, yeah. So if there's an issue where you're standing or whatnot, you might have to move. But I, I actually did it a couple of times while I was there and I didn't have a problem with it.
Because I have A T and T and I get zero signal all throughout town, pretty much.
If you have Verizon, Verizon, um, put in a, a new tower and it kind of like destroyed everybody else's bandwidth. But right now Verizon coverage is excellent. I even got, went up, uh, Catamount Trail and I had, I got a phone call about my car's extended warranty on the, on Catamount Trail at the top of the, top of the mountain. I had service all the way up, but it is, uh, Verizon in, right now in town is the, the best service provider and it has full coverage all over town.
Yeah, so we, with those kiosks, with those kiosks, we have the ability to use, uh, whichever provider has the best service. So some towns we use A T and T, some we use Verizon. Uh, we did our test with Verizon, so we have, um, yeah.
So does the kiosk act like some kind of a booster for the signal?
No, no, it's, it's, it's just, it's just pulling a cell signal, like it would pull the Verizon signal and that's how it, that's how it communicates online, the, uh, the transaction of the credit card. So it's an online processing of the transaction.
So just to clarify, if you have A T and T and you get absolutely no signal, you will not be able to use that Q R code on your cellphone?
Yeah, yeah, you sure you'd have to use the kiosk.
But you still have the option to use the kiosk, right? I mean.
Right.
Correct.
Totally. The kiosk, the kiosk will be a hundred percent. If, if, yeah, if you don't have cell service, uh, yeah, unfortunately, that's how the technology's based.
And the kiosk, um, has the option of, uh, what, a credit card, cash?
Credit card.
It's credit card only?
Right. Uh, we can't do cash. We tried doing cash in Idaho Springs. And, uh, it's literally less than one percent of one percent of our business. So, um, uh, you know, introducing cash, it has not proved worthwhile. Plus it also creates, um, issues with money in the machine overnight with people thinking they might try and get to that money. So, um, all, all seven, yeah, all seventy-five locations of our locations in Colorado are credit card only except for one, one machine in Idaho Springs that does maybe fifty cents or a dollar a month.
So if I have, if I don't have a cellphone at all or no reception or that kind of scenario, then I just use a credit card?
Yeah, well, well, you need a credit card to use the Q R code too, so they're both credit card transactions.
Okay.
Okay, so just so I can reiterate this, because we're having a lot of questions blow up on the chat. If you have Verizon, you can probably connect. If you have A T and T, you probably can't. But at the end of the day, you can always pay at the kiosk. You don't have to have a phone to connect, you have a kiosk and you pay there.
Exactly.
So I think that, that answers that.
And that's the same kiosk. We've got about two hundred and forty of them installed across Colorado, so they're all solar powered. It's exactly the same kiosk. There was a question about the alerts that are on the front of the machines. You know, if the town chose not to have alerts or to paint those a different color or to cover the kiosk, we, we did mention initially in our proposal that some of our installations, we put boxes over the kiosks that have been, uh, painted in the, you know, in the colors of the town or showing mountains or whatever. There's a lot of flexibility there, so they can become, uh, quite attractive if you so desire.
All right. Margaret, I haven't heard from you.
Thank you. Um, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate the, the different comments and the different questions. And I, I really appreciate Todd speaking up on behalf, um, and the fact that we really do need to look at future revenue and securing revenue for the town to come up. Jane, I appreciate you saying that, you know, this is quality of life. Um, Jane, I appreciate you saying that, you know, this is quality of life for the residents. And we've had lots of issues with that. Now, as far as kiosks go, um, I think you kind of answered one of the questions I had as far as if they could fit in a little better. Because basically we're saying no, um, you know, these look like parking meters. And we're saying we aren't going to have parking meters. So, um, I'm glad that you, you kind of brought that up just a little bit as far as, you know, what design can we do um for them to possibly fit in a little better to the mountain community, to the, to the, to the surroundings? And how many would really be necessary? Fifteen seems like a little overkill. Is it because of range? Is it because of convenience to get to them? What's the, what's the reason for, for fifteen?
Um, it's a maximum of fifteen, so we probably will be uh in the eleven to twelve range, um, based on the map that we provided in the, in the presentation. Um, the variables you get into are, um, you know, when you have a service line or uh, you know, the area down by the pantry, um, it's all about just making it as um, um, user-friendly as possible. So if, if it became an issue that you wanted to go lower, we could go lower. That's, that's not a problem. We just find from a convenience standpoint, um, that uh, that's a number that we based it on the number of spaces and then the visibility. So we kind of went, we went, you know, area by area, all the way around to the pool and we came up with that number. But actually, when we installed the kiosk and we talked to the businesses about this, it's really a complete decision on the um location of each one. Um, and they can be installed, installed in a, in a manner that's not very intrusive. So, you know, behind a tree or as long as they can, they're, they're completely solar powered and they kind of work on the idea of a, a hybrid vehicle. They have a battery and they're, it's constantly recharged by the sun. Um, they're amazing. We should get honestly, um, and uh, you know, everywhere we install them, we have had that question. They, they really do, um, literally sort of fall into the, into the mosaic of the town. Um, like, yeah, we'd love to do some cool stuff with, uh, you know, paint them or covering them up or anything like that. As long as the solar panel, um, can be, uh, can grab the sunlight and uh the customer can get to the keypad, we can do all kinds of cool stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
That's kind of all I have for comments right now. I think everybody else is, has covered the other issues that, that I've had questions about too.
All right, um. Board, if you have no further questions, we need to look at this ordinance. Angie, can you introduce that, please?
Absolutely. So I'm just going to pull up the ordinance here. Um, this is consideration of ordinance, ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash oh five, which would be an ordinance to the Board of Trustees, the town of Green Mountain Falls, adding a new article to the Green Mountain Falls Municipal Code authorizing special code enforcement of town parking rules. Um, so what this ordinance does is um gives the authority to enforce parking and um.
I'm sorry, Angie, could you read the ordinance?
Read the ordinance?
Please.
You want me to read it word for word?
Are we loading on it? I just think, well, I mean, I just think for the public, maybe if they don't know what it is that we're talking about.
Okay, um, in the interest of time, it's ten, almost ten fifteen. I mean, if you, if you all really want me to read the whole ordinance, I can just give a brief overview of what it's doing.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. Go ahead and do that.
Okay, so this uh peace officer, um, that is in the ordinance, essentially what this does is it gives the uh town the ability to um hire the parking company or a parking company of their choosing and enforce parking. The um, the peace officer listed in here would essentially be the equivalent of the uh Smile Ambassador that works for Interstate Parking. They would issue a uh citation. Um, not a violation, but a citation. Um, and that citation would then um have to be approved by a member of the town staff, the marshal's office, or the town clerk. It could be either one of those two people. Um, by law, this would be that way, that it would have to be set up. Um, once it was then approved, it would effectively become a violation and then would be treated as um any other violation. Um, and essentially, that's what this ordinance does effectively.
Right.
Is Virgil still on? Can we hear from him?
That is a very good idea, Margaret.
I'm still here.
Please, if you would comment.
Hey, in regards to the ordinance and in regards to the overall program, um, citations would be issued on part of the, whichever parking management system we decide to choose. As I understand everything, uh, parking citations would be civil in nature and would be managed by the parking company and not so much through town court. Unless there was a challenge to those uh issued citations. Gareth, you can feel free to chime in on this. But for the most part, it's going to be a civil violation, which is not a criminal violation. And uh, basically, that's, that's where it belongs.
Right, so um, just quickly on, on how the process works. Um, if you, we talked about for uh the first month of operations, we would just give warnings. Uh, um, and it would be um a welcome to um Green Mountain Falls. So, talked about maybe, say, you know, some people, the idea behind that is people with their first experience with the system, they, they may think that it doesn't work. It's pretty foolproof because it's all but done by license plate. So we would give a, a warning, uh, which would basically say, uh, you know, welcome to Green Mountain Falls. Thanks for enjoying our beautiful town. Maybe we give, uh, you know, ten, ten percent off an appetizer at uh the mucky or something like that. Um, that's open, you know, that's really up to the town. Um, once the town feels ready, I mean, if we had to do warnings all summer, we wouldn't have a problem with that for the first summer, given we're only doing Friday to Sunday. Um, as I said, the violation revenue is not significant portion of the revenues. You know, it's really about people using the system the way the town desires. So if uh they do, you know, maybe in the first year, we don't even get to this point, but um,
if they. If you do get to the point where you do want to um issue a formal citation, um, it's uh all done on a handheld by one of our ambassadors. It's all fully computerized. It uh goes to the mainframe uh server, uh cloud-based now. Um, and basically that information is stored. We take a picture of the license plate, so we have verification that the vehicle was there. Um, and then the customer's instructed to go to the website and you can see it at breckpark.com or idahosprings.com. Um, they can either pay the citation or contest it. Um, if, if uh we don't reach a resolution and uh our customer service solution coordinators are on the phone, we usually reach a resolution. Nine, nine percent of the time, we've, we've never gone to court, uh, so I guess it's a hundred percent. Um, you know, generally for us, it's more about you understanding the system. Um, you know, really, it's about accomplishing what the town wants to accomplish. So if it, if it, if it gets to that point with a customer, we'll usually just uh void it if the town is, is cool with that. Um, but it's a pretty comprehensive system. Um, we can go to collections, which we do, um, in a lot of our locations. We use a local-based company um called Saturn Systems, uh, and they have the ability to do uh robo calls and also go after uh your, your credit rating and everything like that if the town so chooses. But that's really the town's decision on that. Um, so really, it's like, like everything in this, the town has the ultimate say on rates, on signage, um, on the placement of the kiosks. Um, if you want us to, to look after the residential areas, that's not a problem. Um, and like the contract, the contract is by no means, no means complete. And, you know, we'll work through it with you to make it um acceptable to all parties, so.
Okay, now with that said, uh, there's a couple of things that have come up during this, this discussion. Judith quoted me as saying that I can't keep people off of uh uh, off of roads and stuff like that, and that's true. I cannot keep people off of public access roadways. However, if the ordinance is such that there's no parking for other than residents above a certain point or on a certain street, then that's a different story. And that's something that the parking company is willing to enforce as well. The whole matter of this comes down to. I'm sorry?
Yeah, sorry, just to add on to that, that's been extremely effective in, you know, both of the cities we operate in, in Colorado, uh residential areas. Idaho Springs on weekends, a lot of people could never park in front of their house. They have to end up parking three blocks away and now they can park in front of their house, so they really appreciate our involvement.
And that's something that I'm trying to uh help with outside of uh enforcement and me having to be there twenty-four seven, which is not going to happen. I guarantee you that, that's not going to happen. I've got to have some time off. And uh with the introduction of the system, at least I've got a little bit back, uh, backup, a little bit of, a little bit of time where I don't have to be there. And it, it, it amazes me that some people think that the reserves, and I've got three of them. They think that the reserves can be directed, do what they, you know, what they, you know, want to work and all that stuff. They need time off. They've all got full-time jobs otherwise, too. I'm basically a one-man show.
Hey, Virgil, I, I had a question for you.
Go ahead, Chris.
What, man?
Trusty Quinn, sorry.
Oh, that's, that's fine. Um, and it's kind of regarding the ordinance, so I don't know, uh, Angie might have an answer for me. I'm looking under this section under creation and, and, you know, to say, I, I do like the idea of, of having a special code enforcement officer for parking because I think it is, you know, a, an issue in town. Uh, I was just curious about, under the creation, like, so we're creating this uh position. How does that affect? I, I don't, you know, this is in addition to, so this doesn't restrict you in any way. This doesn't take away any of this authority from you. And I don't know that it's clear in how it's written, just, you know, I'd like to see maybe some language of, in addition to, you know, your office, so as not to.
Okay, Trusty Quinn, I think, I, I think I see what you're talking about and I understand that. And that's kind of generic language, if I'm not mistaken. And anybody, feel free to correct me on this.
And, and you may be right, Virgil. I, you know, it may be because it's not taken away explicitly, it may just still remain. And, and that's kind of how I would read that. Um, so the other question I have is, okay, so this is, so.
If, if, if I can, I can just make a comment on that. Um, like, the, yeah, what, um, what Virgil's saying is, 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 you know, pretty commonplace in, in almost every town. And one of the reasons we were, we're very close on three other towns is that, um, you know, Virgil's uh overtaxed already with a lot of different issues. Um, you know, and the reality is that uh parking compliance usually, nothing against Virgil, but in the, in the course of duties, it usually falls to the, you know, the bottom of the tree. Um, so what's happened in Breckenridge and Idaho Springs and these other towns is that the police department um has been very, we, we, we work toe-in-toe uh in that, you know, they don't have the time to take care of the parking, so we do. But there's a lot of cross-communication and uh, yeah, it works, it works really well. It's a, it's a great system, like Virgil says, like, you know, the residential areas are going to get to hit the hardest from nine AM to five PM when the, when the hikers are going. And, you know, that's when our guy becomes very valuable. The fact that residents can say, hey, I just noticed, uh, you know, a hiker park in front of my, um, in front of my house and uh, get, phone our guy and literally he'll be over there pretty quickly as soon as he's done whatever. It's a, becomes a great service um for residents and for the community.
Okay, let me uh respond to a comment from David. Um, yes, I am well-informed on this program. I have studied the contracts. And I am totally and completely opposed and have stated my position previously on parking meters and stuff like that. So uh for David to say that I am uninformed or not clear on the program, I am clear on the program. I understand it. I understand it will deal with downtown. I will understa, I understand that it will deal with the residential areas. So uh for a statement to be made like that, I resent it. And it's just not true.
All right, board.
Can I ask a question real fast?
Yep.
So, basically, what I'm hearing and what I'm understanding is this ordinance um will allow, allow whoever the person is, Virgil or whoever, to um go to the specific areas that we say parking isn't allowed here unless you're a resident. So what section and what needs to be put into this ordinance for that to happen? Do we just need to see, to say, any residential area that is not on the main road? Or does it need to be more specific?
Margaret, I think, I think what we're dealing with here is just the creation of this enforcement officer. I think something like that would be something that, that, then that officer or whatever would put into place. I don't think that's something that belongs in a document like this. This is just creating this position.
Okay, so maybe in our code instead?
That's something we definitely need to work on, but it's just not part of this particular document.
That is correct. It cer- certainly doesn't need to be um put into code. Um, it's something that is an operational item that Virgil um works with the parking company on.
More a policy.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep, we actually have a couple of things in front of us right now. We have.
I'm sorry, Jane, I, I wasn't quite done. I just had another question about this.
Yes.
So, I see that, I see that the town manager will do the hiring, but who, who's, who, who is the supervisory entity or is this uh its own kind of department or what's the, the structure on that?
Um, Trusty Quinn, so I believe that, I believe you're asking about the, the um. Um trustee Quinn, so I believe that I believe you're asking about the the um. Uh the enforcement officer that's in this.
That's correct, yes.
Yep, so this falls under uh Virgil's department.
Okay.
Because it is an officer and he's the police department, so um but the town can delegate this authority. Uh to go out and basically they just write the ticket or write the warning or citation. And then Virgil is the final authority on actually making them official violations.
Okay, so would would it be more appropriate for the marshals to do the hiring?
Well, normally.
His authority?
Right, so this this um if the parking contract were to be um. Entered into if the town were to enter in it into an agreement with the parking contract, I'm the signatory on that, so. But or the.
That would be, I'm sorry, but that would be something that would be like. I just, I I'm trying, I think they need to be linked somehow, like, yes, you would do the hiring as the town manager, because that's. Part of your, part of your job in that respect, entering into contracts, things like that. And I just, I don't. I don't know that it needs to be fall under the authority of the town manager versus under. Uh the marshals and particularly because of the uh, you know, the um. The authority segment B, all of this gets, you know, this is issue of municipal court summons complaints, I just, I just think that would fall much better under. Under our law enforcement, you know, uh. You know, a authority or what have you. I just think it's more, might be more appropriate to have it in that, in that kind of. Organizational setup.
Trusty Quinn, if I may?
Yes.
Um, the hiring of a codes enforcement person. Is not a hiring by the town. It is a generic term. To allow a company to issue citations on on behalf of the town.
I I understand.
And when there is conflict or there are issues, it would basically boil down to my office.
Uh, right.
The uh. The issuance of an actual criminal summons or a criminal complaint would come down to me. But the most. The, God, what am I?
Well, this this is why my, this this is very specific to what they can enforce.
Yeah, it is very specific to what they can enforce. They can enforce the parking regulations and so forth by the town. And one of.
Currently, who who does that?
The uh currently it'd be me.
Right, so that's why that that's why I was kind of leading to that, like, I think this belongs more. As far as organizationally within our code, I think it makes more sense to have this fall underneath. I mean. I I understand we're trying to fit it to the to the contract that we're also going to be considering, but. You know, I I want this set up so that in the event, let's say in two years, if this thing goes through. In two years, you know, we part ways that we still have the authority to kind of still accomplish. What we're what we're, you know, talking about here with having, you know, like you said, some help that.
So this contract, this actually um allows me to the gives me the ability to manage the contract. Portion of it, but the violations and whatnot, that's still overseen per another, per other ordinances and whatnot by. The marshal's office. Um so this is the contract management portion of of that is what you're referring to.
And and also uh two years from now, if the parking company goes away. There will still be an ordinance in place that says no parking in residential areas. Uh that things like that. Uh the. My ultimate goal is to be able to say. You know, if you're from Colorado Springs, if you're from Little Park, if you're from wherever. You can't park in our residences. You can't park in our residential areas. That is my ultimate goal.
Yes, and and I and I can see that being achieved with. And and I, you know, I want, again, I want to be clear, I'm I'm not considering any contracts at this point. I'm just looking at the code. And how this is gonna read and fit into our current ordinances and things like that. So, you know, organizationally, I think. In my opinion, I I I think, you know, this needs some more clarity on where it's gonna lie. In the event, like I said, I mean, this is gonna be in code for a long time. You know, who knows what the future may bring as far as how the town decides to handle and manage parking, but. I think having a position such as a special code enforcement officer is a good idea, you know. Um but I don't like to tailor, you know, kind of ordinances to a particular need such as to fit a contract. I think that it needs to be able to stand on its own and sustain, you know, without consideration of a a contract that's coming next.
I I I I agree with you totally. There's nothing I would love than to have a codes enforcement officer. That reports directly to me, but that's not available under the current budget.
Understood.
It's just not something that's available.
Well, yeah, and and looking at, you know, and like um Angie had said at the last meeting, you know, this is all dependent on budget, obviously. So, you know, I had asked that question at the last meeting, so I understand, I mean, but I I just think for for our code and whatnot. I think it's good to have this this kind of step to create a position that could, you know, potentially, who knows, you know, we. Get all this revenue and now, you know, we, you know, we we have a position that is beneficial, I think the town wants. Yes, we we are also considering achieving that through this contract with interstate, but. Again, I want to stay pure to the code and make sure that we're setting this up correctly, you know. Without consideration of what's happening now, because this is gonna be in place for a long time.
Okay, so I can address this now. Actually, I have two different items ahead of us. Um.
Yeah, I I would just say on the amendment, that's something the town um can settle and will, you know, will cooperate in any way that's. Uh applicable to what the town decides on how they want to structure it, so. Um what Virgil and I, Virgil and I talked about is in the rarest circumstance that there might be a dispute. We don't plan that to happen. He would have the ultimate say um on any violation. That was kind of the. Um and I'm more than willing to write that into the agreement.
Okay, well, let me address a few things that are going on here and let's see if we can get this show on the road. At ten thirty, none of us are at our best, so.
Late, yeah.
Uh let me address a few things. Um people are worried about guests at their camp getting a ticket or short-term rentals getting a ticket. This is very simple to solve. You contact Interstate, whether through phone call and online, and you say. Here's my guest's license plate number and there, boom, they're registered to park. Same thing with short-term rental. And I think as a short-term rental owner that can easily call to you that. You have their license plate number, you tell Interstate they're parking in a residential with their car from Kansas, they're not getting a ticket. Now, ahead of us is this ordinance that we have been discussing for some time. This actually, this ordinance is pretty generic. It isn't tailored to a contract. All it does is create a position of code enforcement officer. At the end of the day. All of our town employees are ultimately hired by the town manager. They may be selected by the marshal. Or in Public Works, they may be selected by um the Public Works Director. But at the end of the day, everybody gets hired hired by the town manager, so that is simply. Um, what is in front of us tonight is um approval of an ordinance. The ordinance does not mean. Um. The parking, the second portion of the program here today is the parking management agreement. So if we can put this into bite-sized pieces so that we can keep moving ahead. Um ordinance twenty twenty-one oh five and ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the town of Green Mountain Falls. Adding a new Article fifteen to the Green Mountain Falls Municipal Code authorizing special code enforcement of town parking rules. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to postpone this. I I think, yeah, I would like to see a little more um clarification on the structure of this. Uh and how it fits into our our code.
I'll second that. I think we also need some more information about, you know, the designation of residential zones and all that.
Okay, and you want that within the ordinance?
Or I I think we just need more discussion about the residential zones before we vote on this particular ordinance.
All right, Borden, is there, there is a motion and there is a second. Is um is there any further discussion?
Is this um, is this information that that we'll be able to have available um by the next town meeting?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Margaret. I just like this to have a little more clarity on where this fits into your code, because I I. I see the authority to create it, but I just, I think it's lacking in. And a little more specific to be enacted as the ordinance change, you know, adding adding to our code. We have enough problems with our code that I don't want something that we're gonna have to come back later and and work on, I think. I don't know if, you know, how what the attorney's had on. Any comment on this and things like that. I I'm just, I I think it's a good idea. I just don't think the document itself is ready.
And Chris, I completely get that, but I just wanna, I just wanna have a date that we're gonna resolve this by. So that it doesn't hang out over our heads too much.
I would say by our next regular meeting.
Thank you. That's what I was asking.
Yes.
So your motion is for a continuance?
Uh just, yeah, postpone to the next meeting, because I I don't think the ordinance is is ready to be a. Uh. Ready to be adopted as as it's written.
All right, is there any further discussion on um continuing this to the next regular meeting? And this is just the ordinance, this is not the parking agreement, that's a separate issue.
That's correct, just the ordinance. I just, how this how this position fits into, you know, the organization, I. I think it's pretty vague. I I apologize, I I I don't even know who what, you know. It it appears that the town manager would be the direct report.
Yes, so everyone is a direct report to the town manager position. Um this ordinance only provide, opens up the authority to delegate that role. That role that's listed in the ordinance, that's all it does.
Right, I guess I'm kind of have a problem with, because they're enforcing. Authorities under the marshal. I just, I don't know if this is gonna be an issue, and I I'd like to have.
Does not put uh authorities onto the marshal. He's got other, um, his authority is already and it. It is what it is. He would just be the supervisor to that position essentially.
Right, but that is not, that is not spelled out in this document, is my point.
It's it's legalese and it's it is from our attorney. Um he did write it specifically for this purpose.
For what purpose?
For the purpose that I've explained, um to delegate, to create. To create the bill, ability to delegate the authority to write a warning and or citation. Which we can enter into an agreement with a parking contract to do such.
Right, but is it also set up in the event that we do not have a third party?
No.
If that, well, that's what I mean. If this document is gonna be part of our code in fifty years. I want to make sure that we put it in place correctly.
I mean, the attorney, certainly, we could ask him to come and have a discussion. Um, they, you know, they they charge a considerable sum of money, but they uh could, we could certainly ask them to come and be a part of this discussion if you'd like.
Uh that's just how I feel about it. I mean, I, others others may be comfortable, I just. Uh uh, you know, as someone that deals with contracts, like, it's just too vague for me. But that's just my opinion.
So we have a motion and a second on the table to postpone this ordinance. Um, if there is no further discussion and if you wish to postpone it, please indicate by saying aye.
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 And I vote in opposition of a postponement for that, but that passes and that will be postponed. Parking management agreement, um since the first one is postponed, I would assume. That we're going to hear something very similar. Borden, what else do you want to know about this parking management agreement?
Um, well, in continuation of who hires the code enforcement officer. My reading of the of the contract looks like um Interstate. Uh does that and and, you know, talks about uniforms and that that sort of thing. So it looks like they're, they're an employee, I guess, of Interstate. But the authority to enforce code is given by the town manager. Is that, that's the scenario we're we're discussing.
That is correct.
Um. Yeah, well, thanks for clearing that up, but there there are some, um, I, I think, um Lamar brought up some. Um. Issues about the contract. They're looking at um. But um. I didn't know that we were looking, I mean, is this, is this the contract that um. That you want um, that you're comfortable going forward with, Jane? Anna Mayor?
If I, if I can intercede there for a second, sorry. Um, yeah, I'm more than, I'm more than happy to sit down with Lamar and work through any of the. The points that he has. Um, yeah, I don't see this as a final uh contract by any means. Um, generally, it takes, there's a lot of variables, and we've discussed already a few of them that we can easily rectify.
Well, I appreciate Lamar's attention to detail and um, you know, she uh appears to have um lots of. Um, experience with uh with contracts, but she's um, she's not a board member or um. Uh, hmm, so I I I don't really know how appropriate that is. I don't know.
Well, I actually think um what might be helpful in that situation, in that particular situation. Um. Is if Lamar would work with Angie, even if it's just submitting the question she has. And then we could approach that um. Contract from there.
I think that's a good idea, Jane. Uh I mean, we we accept volunteer help on lots of things, and if we have someone with some expertise, I say.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good to me, too.
All right, well, then I would, I would indicate that Lamar works with Angie on that particular program. Um. So, Borden, what am I hearing about this management agreement? Continuance?
Yes.
Catherine, was that a motion?
Uh, yes, I moved that we continue this at at our next meeting.
All right. Is there a second?
I would uh. You know, uh uh I would move to um postpone this uh to a point, to a date uncertain.
I, my personal opinion is kicking the can down the road over and over and over. Isn't getting us anywhere at all. I mean, sooner or later, we need to pull the trigger on yes or no, up or down. And I think continuance.
Well, I I would move my motion to uh to the. To not approve.
Okay, now, we're getting into crazy town here with, with the motions. We have a motion and I have to straighten this out.
I'm sorry, I changed my motion, yes.
Well, we already have a motion on the table for continuance. And I asked for a second, so we need to go through that first before we can.
I'm sorry, I, I should have waited longer. I didn't hear one.
Okay, so Catherine made a motion for continuance of contract and asked for a second.
I'll second for continuance to the next meeting.
Okay. So, there's a motion on the table for continuance. Margaret has seconded that for continuance to the next meeting. All those in favor of continuance to the next meeting, please vote by saying aye.
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 Aye. And opposed?
De'anni.
All right, so it's three to two that this will continue. Now, Chris, do you want to make it? I mean, you can make a motion to divide altogether, but it's already been voted to be continued.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay. I think they're in a good place there. Um, and I think it deserves to have all the questions answered that can possibly be answered. Uh, personally, I feel if we just say no to everything, we're not even opening ourselves up to the possibility of something good that can happen. And that is just my opinion, and that is passed. And we are on to item eleven, which is the CUSP request for letter of support in grant matching funds. Um, Interstate, thank you all for attending. I know this was a bit of a grinder and a kind of a long meeting, but thank you all for being here.
Yeah, we, we enjoyed it, and I think the goal would be to get, uh, the contract where Lamar's happy with it for the next meeting.
We're gonna do the best we can do.
Thank you, Gera.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the CUSP request for letter of support in grant matching funds, um, Angie, I just need clarification, much as David Dedless asked, with that forty-eight hundred dollars, is that part of the sixteen nine seventy-five? Or is that a separate number, or where are we with that?
So, the forty-eight hundred dollars is the, uh, contract that was executed with, um, with them last year. Uh, the, the, because COVID hit, they were not able to complete the work. The work was put off. The for, fire forest mitigation, um, the fire mitigation budget is sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for this year. That forty-eight hundred dollars would have to come out of that budgeted money for this year, because it will be billed this year, and the majority of the work will be completed this year. It did just recently restart. Um, so if, so this, uh, sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollar request from CUSP that's on the, uh, before the board today would be reduced, the amount that is in the budget line item would be reduced by that four, forty-eight hundred dollars. Uh, there is a miscellaneous light item, uh, which we had set apart aside of sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for, um, miscellaneous and or, um, grant matching funds. We certainly could take the, the, um, the forty-eight hundred dollars from that pot to, uh, bring the fire mitigation budget back up to this amount that they're requesting from us.
All right, um, that makes sense to me, and of course, we'll want to see that in the budget. Uh, board, what questions do you have further about this?
Well, that makes sense to me, too, but I'm thinking there was a reason that we did that ma, amount for grant matching. Was it for CUSP funds or was it for something else? Because I remember we had a conversation regarding that, but I just don't remember the exact conversation.
I thought it came down to, we had it in miscellaneous, but we approved it to use for forest mitigation.
So we had, um, thirty-some thousand dollars, so, uh, and we split it in half. We put half in forest fire mitigation budget, and then we put the other half in this miscellaneous grant match, because the board, uh, if I recall properly, was, um, had a discussion about, well, maybe there's something, some grant that will be available that is a high priority as well as fire mitigation that we may be interested in, in going for.
Right, so it was kind of the pie in the sky thing for grant match. Thank you for the reminder.
Yeah.
But we still have this forty-eight hundred. Um, as I recall, one day was completed, but we need to complete the other days, correct? And we still have that in, I mean, that's still part of the pot to finish with Swift, right?
Yes, that's, that's correct. Um, we had not been billed for that yet, and it would go into this year's budget. Uh, the majority of the work is going to be completed during this calendar year also, so.
Okay, okay. Um, I am curious, and this is nothing anyone can answer here, um, what they're talking about with the private parcels commitment from this grant, and I guess we will find out more about that when the grant is submitted. Um, but board, what I am looking for now is, um, approval for this, for the moving of the funds and keeping the line item at sixteen nine seven five.
So before we do that, Rocco's got a question about the five thousand allocated in twenty twenty and where it went. Angie, could you explain to him how that works? As far as budget and appropriations and moving funds from one year to the next, please?
Yes, so, uh, the budgeted funds from last year, um, considering that was five months ago, the year-end closeout for that has happened. We're moving into an audit season. So that is, um, that year will be audited. Um, that year is closed out. Uh, the majority of that work, because that work was not completed last year, um, the majority of the work will be done in this year, uh, as well, so the, they're going to bill us in twenty twenty-one for work being done in twenty twenty-one, and that would need to be paid out of the twenty twenty-one budget. Um, so.
So, in other words, the money wasn't spent last year, so the line item is moved forward to this year. The money didn't disappear.
No, the money certainly didn't disappear.
Right.
Many, he asked me when I discovered this. I actually discovered this. I found out that, uh, a community member, to my knowledge, I'm not exactly sure who, uh, gave CUSP the go-ahead to continue with the contract work. Um, so, uh, that's when I discovered that that bill would be happening, um, this year.
All right, so that is that.
Oh, there's another question here. Uh, why was there no attempt to work with CUSP to pay a prorate amount in twenty twenty for work completed? We did not receive a bill from CUSP for work completed in twenty twenty. It was a very small amount of the work, and the majority of it is complete, going to be completed this year. The money was not moved to another line item.
And again, you've already explained that that's included in the sixteen nine seventy-five that, that we authorized.
Absolutely. We definitely have the money to be, to cover it, for sure.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, so we had talked about, um, making sure that we are well-represented financially so that we have the matching portion that the Coalition for the Upper South is asking for. So any further discussion on that? Seeing none, I would like to move that we approve this letter, including that we are in agreeance of supporting with our matching funds, our portion for this grant.
A second.
Board, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item twelve is correspondence. This is for PRT meetings from four twenty-eight as well as the Tyler Stevens reappointment letter from El Paso County. Board, do you want to bring any one of these items out for discussion? All right, seeing none, I would like to comment, um, thank you to the PRT. Thank you for submitting your minutes. That's great. And also, again, board, thank you for reappointing Tyler Stevens, to work with the CDVG. That's always a good thing to be very good at it. Next item is reports, and we will start with trustee reports. Trustee Quinn.
I think we've had enough. I'm good, thank you.
You think? You're done. That's fine. Thank you so much. Uh, De'anni?
Um, no, nothing to report. I just appreciate everyone's input, and I appreciate everyone for staying on so late at night. It shows a lot of passion for our community.
Very true. Thank you. Uh, Catherine?
Um, I want to support all the things that De'anni just said. Um, thanks a lot for everyone and your input, uh, but nothing else to report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Margaret?
Um, no, nothing else. I, I concur with the fellow trustees.
Very good. Um, I will save any remarks I might have to the end. Do we have any committee reports? All right, seeing none, we will go to staff reports. Marshall, I'd like to start with you, please.
You don't want to hear any more from me than what I've already said.
All right, fair. Um, Matt, do you have a report?
Yeah, I still don't have a lamp, so I'm using my cellphone, and, uh, I have a four-hour report that I'd like to start right now. No, I'm kidding. Let's, let's, let's move on.
All right, seems fair. Um, Angie, how about a report from you?
I'd just like to echo what the town marshal said and say goodnight to all.
All right, um, well, let me take my two minutes that I always get to take for myself. Uh, thank you, everybody. It's always interesting to see what people are passionate about. As I have said many times and will continue to say, um, it's rare that I meet someone who gets into this because they have ill intent. We may not agree, uh, but I know that everyone comes here with the best intention for the town. And one thing I really appreciate, and I don't know that people think about this, but I really appreciate the way the board can have a discussion and where we can disagree, because when we can disagree, I know that you're coming with honest opinions and well-thought-out opinions, and we shouldn't agree all the time. We should actually be able to politely disagree, and I very much appreciate that. I appreciate all your hard work. Um, this is an interesting time for this town. And, um, let's see us move forward. So, thank you all. Uh, thanks for hanging in there and all your hard work. The time is eleven oh four, and let's adjourn this meeting.
Good night.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you for your time, everybody. Have a good evening, or I guess night. It's eleven.
Whatever.
Goodie, good night.